Thirty-two seconds, okay. Melody, thank you. Melody takes notes for us, she's in the other room. And so tonight, if you ever do come up and speak at the podium, we'll ask that you state your name for the record. Please speak as clearly as you can, so she can get it for the record. Welcome to our Planning Commission meeting. Who's here is their first time to a Planning Commission meeting? Just by show of hands. So a lot, wow, a lot of people. It seems like people show up when they have something to talk about. So there's obviously something to talk about this evening. We did receive a fair number of comments on some of the items. And I'll let, at that time, I'll talk about that in just a second. The way we're going to start our agenda this evening is a beginning with the invocation by Commissioner Shiel, after which I'll stand and lead everybody in saying of the Pledge of Allegiance, if you wouldn't mind joining us at that time. Commissioner Shiel.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this evening in our Washington City Planning Commission, and we're thankful for this opportunity to be together with citizens of our city. And we're thankful for their support. We're thankful for the city officers and the staff of the city, and for their work and diligence, and for the opportunities that they have to serve those citizens. We're thankful for all thy help. We ask thee that we can be professional this night, that we can be even tempered and be able to communicate the things that need to be discussed. And we pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Would you all please rise and join me if you would like in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Commissioner Shiel, thanks. Tonight, we are missing one of our commissioners, as well as our city attorney, that typically sits with us up here on the stand. Drew Ellerman of Staff will be here answering a lot of questions, if you're wondering who he is. As I mentioned, my name is Jason Hanson. I relocated about five, six years ago from the San Diego area with my family. And we've been here ever since and continue to plan on wanting to be here. If, I'm in the investment management business, I own my own company. And I just wanted to go through commissioners, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, let everybody here know who you are and what type of business you're in. Anderson, you want to start?
Corey, sorry, Corey Anderson. I own a construction and architecture company here in town. We do custom homes and remodeling. I've got a background, a degree, master's degree in public policy and business management.
I'm Doug Shiel. I have been on the commission for just about three years. And I'm a commercial real estate broker in sales and leasing.
I'm Peter Bullock. I own the Steel Fabrication Company here in town, and I was born and raised here.
Latai Tupoe. I moved out here the end of 2016. I have been in banking and finance for over 25 years, and I live in Washington Fields.
Thank you. So the last meeting we had, we had quite a number of people here. And it was like, similar to this, there was people, it was their first, most people it was their first meeting. And for the first time since I've been the chair, I asked everybody to introduce themselves. And I had some feedback, actually, from people in the community that reached out to me and said, thank you for at least letting people know who we are. We were all appointed by the city council to do what we do. I think it helps just to know that. A lot of times, people say, oh, you are best friends with the city council, and you've already made your decision on what you're going to approve. I haven't, I know that. I know Martinson's here, there's a few council members that are here. And I know two of them somewhat decent, but we really don't. We try to keep ourselves separate. We're here, we're not against you, we're trying to be here with you to fight your battle. If you have one, obviously, you're here. So there's some reason that you want to express your, nobody comes and tells us how great of a job the city's doing. So I'm, you know, we've read your comments, and when we get to a point here in the evening, we'll give everybody a chance that would like to, to stand up and speak. And like I said, the last meeting, I'll be respectful if you're respectful. If you're not, I have no problem just telling you to leave and have the officer in the back escort you out. I remember early on, after one of the meetings, it got almost physical contentious with me. And I, to this day, I feel pretty bad about it. Somebody had said something to somebody, and I felt like I wanted to stand up for them. I just don't want it to happen again. So as we get, the more people I see, the more, sometimes I get a little nervous about people being rude or contentious, because again, we're here to help you, we're not here to try to be an adversary to you. So I'm really super funny, I'm not adversarial at all, so we'll see. We'll see what happens tonight, but I hope you all are here, and we're going to try to get this through for you, see what we can do. Let's go ahead and turn to our approval of the agenda, commissioners. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as is, unless there's anything we need to discuss.
Ms. Shiel, I would move that we approve the agenda for this evening.
This is Bullock, I'll second.
I've got a first and a second to approve the agenda as is, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is set for this evening. I look for item number two, a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting, April 19th. If there's any questions or additions, please let us know at this time, otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
This is Commissioner Tupoe, I make a motion to approve the minutes from April 19th, 2023.
Ms. Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
I've got a first and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Can you guys hear the ringing a minute ago in the microphone, is it just me? Oh, man, somebody out there is going to yell at me, I feel it coming. Okay. You really can't hear that?
No. I don't hear certain tones.
All right, wow. Okay, item number three, declaration of abstentions or conflicts. This is the part in the agenda where if any of the commissioners have a financial interest or any other reason to abstain from one of the items on the agenda, they should let us know at this time. I do not have any this evening. Anybody here have anything? We'll jump right into it, to number four A on the agenda. This is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to city council for a general plan amendment, G-2303, to change from administrative professional open space and an R16 zoning to PUD, a planned unit development zoning located approximately Washington Parkway and 250 East. The applicant is Greg Whitehead and Bush and Gudgel. I'll turn the time over to Drew Ellerman for our staff report.
Thank you, everybody.
You can't hear it.
Okay, the applicant is requesting approval of a general plan land use map amendment. The requested area covers approximately 18.72 acres. The current land use designations are civic and open space. The applicant is seeking approval to have the land use designation changed from planned unit development, planned, sorry, planned, let me back up here a second. Land use designations changed to planned unit development and open space for general plan designations. And that would be for future office space and commercial uses. The surrounding general plan use designations are medium-high density residential and open space to the north, civic to the east, medium-density residential to the south, and medium-high density residential to the west. Staffs reviewed the requested change, is comfortable with the proposal, find it to be in harmony with surrounding uses, general plan designations. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of G-23-03 for the general plan amendment from the current civic and open space to the proposed planned unit development and open space designations as outlined and shown in your exhibits that are attached to the report. And that would be on to the city council, that recommendation. So just to help you follow this map, everything that's in green is currently open space and will remain a general plan designated open space. Again, this is just general plan, it's not zoning. Anything that's pink, or white, or blue is asking to be changed. The blue area is what's in open space right now, that they wish to change to PUD. The pink is called civic, and they're wishing to turn that to PUD as well, so that you would just follow that line through here, minus that green area that they're asking to go to PUD, which is planned unit development. And again, it's for commercial. You could designate that as part of your, if you feel so inclined. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that commissioners have for me. I know you've got your comments that were given in to you, so I don't know if that helps or want, you know, direct any questions through that as well, I'll be glad to help you.
Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions that you have initially for staff before we get to the public comment section.
Drew, could you pull it up on an aerial? I pulled it up and, anyway, I just want to verify if it's where I thought it was.
Well, this is the area you kind of, you know, as with the map, it kind of runs through here and then up, and then along the parkway. You can see it in here, I'm just taking my arrow around, so you, it's not all this civic piece over here, but just a slice of here, and then the green and the pink.
Can you blow that up just a little bigger?
Whoa, too much.
Yeah, the other way, the other way. Keep going.
You still need more?
Oh, I want to see a little bit further to the west.
To the, Telegraph is way south. This is, Brio's right over here, and you guys are all familiar, if you live up in this neck of the woods, Brio is this area that's red and orange and pink. That's all Brio's development. You can see the houses underneath it. And this is the new, you know, right at the end of Main Street, up where it hits the parkway. So keep going to the left, or is that enough west?
I was just going to have you pull it, pull it down so that the parkway is down on the bottom of your screen.
Oh, the part, you want the parkway down here?
Yeah, I want to, yeah.
You want to see what's up in the, up in the Sitla property on the other side of, okay?
I was thinking it was over in that area.
Now, be aware, that's that planned unit, planned community development, Solante, is that that's what all that area is already zoned and master planned now. They're, they've already come in with one preliminary plat, and then they'll just keep moving forward, so.
Drew, the color scheme that we see on here, is this what was established in 2017 with the city? Or how long has it been set aside for?
This area is actually done before that, it stayed on the 2017. This was, this is Sitla property. And Sitla brought us all that area, how they, you know, that's why you look at it, and it's kind of, you know, we just kind of left these gaps. Normally, we wouldn't have those, those gaps in between, but again, it's the general plan. They're not done by, by specific, you know, meets and bounds, or just kind of, I hate to use the word, but kind of clouds that just kind of will sit there, and is the best way to determine, but Sitla brought us this, oh, I'm trying to, I think it was around maybe even 14, they redid this whole area when they were trying to start promoting it. W. Clyde has since purchased or gone into a contract with Sitla for all this area up here, hundreds of acres for a master plan development. And so that, that, that was Sitla's proposal of everything. Again, they're the owner of the property. And again, they own right here above this subdivision, all this is, is Sitla land.
So if I own a house anywhere in the city, and Sitla is, owns property around me or behind me, or in front of me, anywhere around me, I'm not, I know what Sitla is now, but Sitla can sell that at any time, make an agreement with the city, isn't Sitla sold off? That's what it's designed to do over time, right, is to sell pieces?
Basically, school trust land. So you can either call it some, some other states call it state land, but that's what's been designated by the federal government for, to sell that property for education purposes, okay? You have BLM or state land, that's the two that, if they're not owned by private, that's who usually owns them. BLM, we know, is the federal government. Sitla or state land is the state of Utah. And so this particular piece is owned by the state trust land, which again, is for the purpose of sale, to generate money for education. They carry a trump card always, they don't use it, but they do have a trump card that, they, they work with the cities, but if the cities don't want to work with them, they can play their trump card. There is a state law that says they can kind of sell it and develop it as best, at the best money. Yeah, or own it themselves, or sell it, and let, you know, as a, they would build it and then sell it, yes.
Isn't that something that we've seen recently, that Sitla's developing something, and they're going to own it?
No, they go in partnership, actually with all these. If you go up to the Greenspring, Solante, they own the ground, and then, and Coral Canyon's the same way. If you go to Coral Canyon, they still own all the property. And then you, you, you know, they buy that. CNA Hills, same thing.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Which is great buying, yeah.
They have, so Sitla has a state mandate, like one thing only, that is to maximize the value of the, of the property, because that's how they fund education in Utah. So that's their only concern, is how can we maximize the property to fund education?
So if you, in your experience here, you've been here how long, 25 years?
Feels like it, but it's only 17, yeah.
17 years?
Thirty years in the business, I'll just put, yeah.
Think of a place where Sitla's come in, and it wasn't, for whatever reason, the city didn't want to do it, and kind of said no, or whatever, what you're saying, the trump card came out?
Well, never went that far, there were times we've come close, but never went that, that far, that's ever had to go that way. And to be honest with you, that's not what they're trying to do, but ultimately, they could if they were pushed to that.
Drew, do you know what kind of office, office space they're offering? Is it?
No, I don't, because we, I really don't like to ask that, so that it doesn't, because again, this is just a general plan. We try not, because then it's almost like you're doing a general plan and a zone change all at the same, you know? And I just always keep plans and everything out of general plan amendments as much as possible, so, because it has its own, especially in a PUD, they would have to come back with the zone change of all those specific looks, parking, landscaping, all that stuff at, at a zone change time.
Thank you.
But they're the same ones building the office spaces down there by the school and lands, and, yeah, down by you guys, so.
Hey Drew, can you show the new development map?
Joe, I don't have, you mean the Greenspring development? I don't have quick access to that, I could get it, but it would take me.
That's okay. Go back to sleep.
Going back to, quite a number of comments that we had referenced the general plan, I guess it was general plan update in 2017 with regards to Washington City's desire for open space. And one of the things, well, Drew, I would assume that you're much more familiar with that than we are, having participated in that. I wasn't even here at that time. We've talked a lot, this is for, I guess for me, we've talked a lot about open space is like, it's like a hanging title, right? Like, it can be changed. It doesn't mean it's going to stay always open space.
Correct.
Is there anything that the city does use that indicates, yes, that is always going to be what I would think as a layperson, open space, where it's not going to be built on?
Well, I will tell you, this, we've had discussions about this because of this situation, you know, why everybody's here, it's a great time for education. Every city that I know, and there are cities I've worked with, or have worked, you know, for or with, open space is a, you know, just what we call a placeholder for a time, because they're not sure what they want to put it as. So oftentimes, they'll, they'll put open space on it and wait till future dictates what it is. It doesn't mean it's carved in stone that it will never be built on. That's not what, you know, the history that I've been as a planner for 30 years, open space, and especially in general plans, is many times, 90% of the time, just a placeholder of just putting some designation on it, instead of just leaving it nothing, because, but they just do that for, to wait to see how the city builds out. Oftentimes, general plans get changed like mass, because over a certain time, development went a different direction, or didn't want to put commercial here, it worked better to be this, or vice versa, that, you know, everybody thought it might be great for multiple housing, but now it's better to put commercial there. So that's why you do updates and change, and that's why people ask for amendments from time to time. But again, open space is, was never that way. Now, this city has made, you know, the council has talked about this a bit over the last couple of years, and in our next amendment of this, we're going to get very specific and do certain areas that we are going to say, these will remain open space, but they're going to be gorges, you know, that you shouldn't be building in any way, or certain things that are just that, well, we will tag those open space, and they'll remain that. Now, we're going to create a new category. We kind of did it right at the end of this one, but we just did it on some big chunks in the south, and gave it what we call not yet determined. And we actually put that on the map as that way, but again, we were just trying to catch some of that stuff we knew would be looked at down on the south. And we didn't have a lot of time to go through and really dig into it. And so we just knew at a certain time we'd come back, and, and we probably will get more specific on the next go-around of saying not yet determined, so we won't have to call it open space, and everybody think, well, I looked on your map, and, and so that's what we're going to do probably in the future, but, so we're kind of in that transition.
Can we just call it permanent open space? That's my, that's my idea.
Well, that's what we're going to do in the future, we're going to go through and say, and certain ones again, but it's going to be areas, I mean, if it's, if it's going to be usable land, and it's owned by some private person, we can't just slap something on it and say, well, you know, sorry, but you'll never build on that, and that's, you're not really allowed to do that, so.
According to what we've looked up here just recently, is that open space was general zoned as open space not to be developed.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So here's the question, Drew, is if it's, if it's zoned as open space, I totally understand that that's just a placeholder, means not yet, not yet zoned. And it could be general planned as whatever, it could be commercial, it could be, you know, single family, whatever. And so if somebody comes in here and say, hey, I want to change this zoning from open space to something that it's general planned for, that's a given, that it's already general planned for that, and even if people don't like it, that's something that, that it's already been general planned for. The question with this is where this, where we're talking about a general plan amendment, the general plan says that it's open space, and so that's a little bit different than, than a, an open space zoning in a, in a commercial general plan area. Because, again, I'm just, I'm reading on, on the city general plan, it says, general plan, general plan has open space. Open area is designated for no or limited development, either preserved or held. And so it seems like this is a very different scenario than a, than a zoned open space that happens to be in commercial general plan area.
Well, I don't see it any, I mean, I see where you're coming from, but we still, you can't stop people from, for applying for something in any city, I don't care where you are. Doesn't mean you always have to give it to them, but you can't stop people from applying to say, look, this land has places on it that can be used, will still do this, they have every right to ask for it. So I'll just leave it at that.
I understand that, I'm just saying, it's, it's a much more significant thing to ask for than if it was zoned open space and already general planned as a commercial.
Right, I think it should be looked at a little with a little more scrutiny, feel free to do that, you know, as a commission. It doesn't mean, I would just say, well, because it was on that map, because again, remember I told you, designations are not done by meets and bounds, okay? That's the biggest thing I want to point out just to you and anybody else, is that if they were done by meets and bounds, it's going to carry, I think, more weight, but it's not. It was generally designated, because again, that's why you, the, you know, the term general plan wasn't just thrown on there happenstance, it's a general plan, generally, okay? It gives general direction, it's not specific direction, pinpointed by a meets and bounds. You know, and like I say, over my 30 years, I explain that a lot, but, because then that's what I want everybody to understand, is that general plans are generally, this is how we'd like things to go. So.
Drew, is there, is there usually an opportunity for residents to buy open space and just keep it open? They just own it and they don't?
Yeah, I'm sure that Sitla would sell this to them if they came in with a bigger dollar amount, and I'm, and I'm, we may joke about it, but because we go back to what Sitla's supposed to do, get the most money for the land, people wanted to buy it, and they own it, Sitla would sell it to them in a heartbeat, on a dollar X amount. And that's what I try to tell people when they talk, you know, especially about protecting my views and all that, because cities aren't, we don't have that, that privilege of protecting views, unfortunately, we don't, and we can't. People like to use it, but it's just, there's no way to do it. But I always, if you own the property between you and the view, then you never have to worry about it, unless you do something that's out of line, you know, or your own kids do or something. But that's the, really, the best way to protect anything is own the land in between what you don't want anything built on, so.
Any other initial questions that you might have for staff? No? Okay, this item is a, has a public hearing attached to it, and I wanted to let you know how I try to run these public hearings, for those of you that's your first time here. As I mentioned, we had a fair number of people that had submitted their comments online, and these comments go to the city council, they go to us as commissioners and to the staff. It's all on the record already. As I mentioned as well, there's three city council members here in the audience that are also listening, so they have these comments, we've read through them all. And if, when I open it up for public hearing, a lot of times, people will submit a comment, and they want to get up and read me that comment. To me, that's a waste of everybody's time, it's not going to help you at all, what your, your case is. We know what it is. If you, if you have submitted a comment, and you're just absolutely pants on fire, have to get up and say something else that nobody else is saying, that would be your opportunity. I, offensive's not the right word, but it's just something, I guess, business, what do I want to say? Courteous? If I have your comment and I read your name, we've, we've read them, Robert Bowles, Gavin Guth, if I mispronounce your name, I apologize, Gavin Guthrie, Scott and Christie Paulson, Corinne Smith, Chris Thurgood, Reed Thurgood, Rayan, I'm going to say Piper, Cameron Roganin. And that's what we received as far as written that were submitted ahead of time. There were some, probably more than any before, I appreciated the comments that were written, it taught me a couple of things in here. Nobody came out and told us how bad we were at our jobs, which is kind of interesting. It did reference quite a bit, and I do want to ask one more question to Drew before we get to the opening, the opening of the public hearing. Like I mentioned, Drew, a lot of these people, or a few of these people have mentioned about the open space, I guess, update, general plan update in 2017. Is there anything that, from the city's point of view, that you can tell me about that, or is there anything specific to this project where it carried more weight at that time, or anything like that? Or is this just part of the city's trying to keep as much open space as they could? Because they're, they're pointing to it like the city said, these places are never being built on, which I don't necessarily agree with, but I just want to make sure I address it.
Again, it just goes back to what Sitla paid someone to do a master layout, you know, and this was part of their property, we just carried that over, because it was their property, you know? That's one, they, they owned all that up there, we just took what they already had, had done, and that was based on what they just kind of thought would flow with it, you know, wasn't specific about, because again, we didn't talk about this, because it wasn't ours, and we just took what Sitla basically gave us, not, didn't go into any detail on that.
So when I was, when I was looking at it, I went back up and read the, the 2000, the guide for all that stuff, and the open space, when I read it, recommended, you know, basically for cuts in the hills and the hillsides and stuff like that on people's property, they're like, they're not going to let them build in that, or they're going to keep that portion of private property open space, because it's not buildable, we don't want to cut, we don't want things like that. That is what my understanding was of trying, from- We don't want things like that. That is what my understanding was of trying, from, from the city's general.
In 2017?
In 2017. Cause I went back and read it just so I could understand it as well, because I kept seeing that pop up. But it was, when I read it, I took it under the impression that the washes won't be built in the, you know, doesn't matter who owns it, it's, it's a drainage and a wash you can't build there. The hillside, we're not going to be cutting hillsides, even though you own the top of that hill, we're still not going to let you build up there on that hillside. Cause it's going to, if it's not manageable, cut to make, go through hillside committee and everything else. That was my impression of keeping the open space as much open as we can. That's, when I read it, that's how I interpreted it.
Okay. Thanks, Pete. Okay. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to speak to this particular item, please come forward to the microphone. And don't forget to state your name for the record. And if you could, please try to keep your comments, give or take three minutes and we'd be appreciative.
May it please this honorable commission, I'm Tim Piper. I'm a homeowner, homeowner and a resident of Washington City. And if I may ask a question, you listed off the different individuals who commented online. Uh, was my name on there?
Yes.
Yes.
Yours is the last one. That's why you missed it. No, it was the last one. It's right there.
Okay. Very good. I know my wife was too. I, I will not, uh, be redundant in what I commented upon, but there has been a couple of new issues that come up regarding the SITLA, uh, that I'm not quite understanding. Uh, are we saying that SITLA is not bound by the zoning, Washington City zoning laws, or the principles, or procedures, or priorities of the, of our general plan? They're not bound by that? Cause you talked about a trump card.
This is when I, this is when I turn, I look right at the attorney and he answers your questions, because I certainly don't know that answer. Drew, do you want to take a shot at that? Or how do we want to handle?
Well, that's my understanding. I'm not going to say it's 110%, but that's my understanding. Is that they, they aren't, and it's not just in our city, it's every city. So.
Well, I guess the, the, the problem then, and there's, there's an inherent conflict with, uh, the general plan, principles and policies, as you saw in my comment. The one thing that really stuck out to me is, is section 2.7 in the general plan. The preservation of permanent open space is among the most important issues facing Washington City today. And that was in 2017. Now is, I think it's even more important. And when, by reading the rest of it about the principles of, uh, of section 2.2, traditional planning, principles, uh, preserving natural terrain and drainage in 2007, a general plan about major dry washes. Uh, that's exactly the situation we're facing here. Uh, and there is a major dry wash in that sliver, uh, up towards the top in between the homes and Washington City Parkway. Uh, let alone the strong policy statement, because I've read the general plan over myself and uh, there's no place in that general plan where there's such clear and strong and unequivocal language uh, regarding a major priority in zoning is that section 2.7 for open space. And I would, um, respectfully disagree with Commissioner Bullock. Uh, open space is also listed as, uh, uh, buffer areas between, it doesn't have to be, um, uh, just a, uh, just a dry wash, but the interesting thing is here, it is a dry wash. Uh, so, and it is a major dry wash. I don't know if you can put up the, um, topographical, but basically what you have, where you have the green sliver that goes up to Washington Parkway there, and that doesn't really, shows it a little bit. But in between exit 13 and Main Street, that is the major wash in that area. It goes all the way up to the Red Cliffs Reserve and it comes down through the culvert, the new culvert, and that culvert is the biggest culvert for drainage between exit 13 and Main Street. And then it goes further and it's protected open space there as it goes further, uh, per the amendment plan. The problem is, is that when you're talking about the drainage, that's a natural watershed area in between the homes and the, uh, Washington City Parkway. And you have a drop of about 20, 30 foot in elevation on both sides down to the major wash, and you have two, 20 to 40 degree, um, degrees of, of angle going down there too. And that causes flooding. I've been here since 2018 and I was here for the great flood of 2018. It was caused, it got called at that time. Uh, once in, I think a hundred years. And the wash, the, the, the flooding, it went out of the banks of the wash at least a hundred feet on both sides. And so when we're talking about a placeholder for, uh, for, um, open spaces, I think that's exactly why this has been in that plan, including a hundred, the 250, 250 on each side because of the slope, because of the drainage and because of the flooding, which has occurred on multiple occasions, uh, in that area. And so I, I don't know if that's, uh, been addressed as part of the consideration or not.
All right, Tim. Thank you. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, yes, just that, uh, I think there is a difference here and the difference here is that, uh, with zoning, and I've heard what you said about the open space zoning, but, uh, there's also a justifiable reliable, uh, reliant standard that, uh, might be in other states. Um, and there's consistency in zoning and there's confidence in zoning. And each of the landowners that I talked to down my street, we did our due diligence in checking to see what was around, what was the zoning around this property? And we found that at the end of the street, it was going to be, uh, most likely for a church, and that's fine. That's a good location. We found that to the east, it was going to be highly developed with commercial and other areas. Uh, there, it's going to be developed. We found that across the street, it was going to be developed, as you've just talked about today. But in 2010, before 2010, in 2016, in 2018, in 2020, it was all open space. And there's a reason why it's, it's open space. And I think there's a, just a, a reliance standard, uh, as, as a matter of equity, of legal equity, uh, that has to be looked at too. Um, is zoning something we can't depend upon at all? Is zoning, how much can we depend upon an open space? It's been an open space for, uh, two decades and seems to meet all the requirements of not only the, the general plan, but also of the, uh, zoning, uh, rules and regulations, specifically regarding open spaces and drainage of the Washington City Code. So that's, those are the considerations I would have you look at and I respectfully request that the, I request for amendment uh, be denied. Thank you for your time.
Tim, thank you. Two minutes, 59 seconds. You got under just the radar. Three minutes. Nice job. Who else would like to speak to this item? Oh, wow. There we go.
Hi, my name is Nina Bowen and I live right on the edge and I, before I bought my house, I did my due diligence and found out what the plan was for all of this area. What I'm noticing now is that although there's miles and miles of walking trails and stuff like that on the other end of town, there aren't any provisions for that on this side of town. And as I look out my window every day, I see hundreds of people out there recreating on this property that's going to be developed. And I wonder if there is any plan for that. I know there's going to be a tiny little city park that's, you know, a mile away. It doesn't seem to me like it's big enough, uh, for people to walk their dogs or to run or ride their bikes, as I see all these people doing today in this area. And my other concern is I wonder, uh, what, what it is that defines a riparian area? Because it appears to me like this area that is currently open space would qualify for a riparian area. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say one thing about SITLA. SITLA is just like any other seller. They, they own a lot of property. They own more property in Washington County than anybody that I know of. And, and they're bombarded with developers going in, trying to buy property. So I don't think SITLA is the bad guys. They may, I don't, I don't think they really have a trump card, but I don't think they're the bad guy. I think the bad guy is the developer trying to buy this and come and change it. And I think that's where we come in, that's where the city council comes in to help regulate it so that it works for the community. Uh, so I, I think you gotta quit pointing the finger at SITLA.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak to this item? While he's coming up, I have to admit, I do not know what a riparian area is. Could you educate me? What is that?
Bird's habitat, et cetera, stuff like that.
That's something I should know? I've never heard that before.
I'm surprised you haven't heard it.
I've always said I'm the dumbest guy in the room.
And you're from Flagstaff.
Yeah, that's, well, thank you.
My name is Bryant Canon and I'm a resident in Warm Springs. Um, I border this, uh, amendment zone and, uh, just have been watching the developments in the area. The rezoning of the piece along Main Street on the north side before it hits Parkway, seeing it be, uh, redeveloped and, uh, it's turned into, I guess, Caldera Townhomes. Um, I think there's 160 plus units there. Um, I'm, I've been living in Washington City for just over 10 years and, uh, I notice all the growth and I understand, uh, the need for housing. I, I understand, um, the demand, um, but it's, it seems for this area in this location, we're squeezing out something that is, um, it's such a minimal amount of area that's left. Uh, if you could pull up the zoning map, um, that shows the general plan, the general plan zoning map, you can see all of the density and all of the residential areas, you know, with those color clouds. And there's a very, very small amount, even if you, you zoom out more, this is the, I guess, more current zoning, but if you could pull up the, the general plan, one that's, uh,
We can't do both. I can only do.
Just, just the general, just the general plan map. If you pull back even, even a little bit more, um, you can see that there's designations for civic here. And they weren't used for civic. Rio's taken over that general plan civic area. It's not used for civic. Um, it, it looks like, you know, we'll have maybe a church over there in the small piece that this is cutting into. If this civic area that's rezoned, um, you know, I, I think that we're just taking out more and more of the buffers. And it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me when all north of, um, Washington Parkway is going to be mostly residential with very small amounts of, uh, public space. I, I think the, the need for the buffered and to maintain these buffers is very important, regardless of the geography and, um, you know, the general plan and stating how general, um, open space needs to be protected, protected. Um, at least this type of open space. Um, so, and I'm a little confused also by the amendment, uh, proposed amendment. It says PUD, um, but it doesn't specify if it's R or C. So we're, I'm, I'm unaware of what actually this is being rezoned for. Is it, I mean, cause my understanding is that, um, the zone districts established, they're defined as PUDR or C. This is PUD. So I don't even know what would be built here or how it would be developed. So, um, I would like to, um, recommend that, uh, maybe another hearing could be scheduled to where that is clearly defined. And we know what we can be, uh, discussing and what, um, is, this is actually defined as, as far as the actual zone. additionally, uh, um, the, uh, rezoning process, I'm also a little bit confused on, um, for, excuse me. My wifi is not working here, but, um, it looks like there's a rezoning process in place for, um, PUD. Uh, something that's zoned as PUDR, um, but there isn't a process, uh, in place that is as strict for a rezoning AP or open space. And I'm wondering if, uh, restrictions that apply for rezoning PUDR or C also apply, um, for that rezoning process to open space. Um, some, an example of that would be, you know, what developments going in, um, a preliminary plan or conceptual design, you know, maybe elevations and uh, basic plan layout of, of what's being developed there. That seems to be a process for rezoning PUDR or C, but it doesn't seem like it's something that's required. So is that the case? Does anyone have an answer to that?
If I, if I could answer your question, so the question you're asking, you're, you're just, this is the wrong meeting for that is all the, this is not, at least this issue, it's not about zoning. It's about general plan amendment. So that's why you don't say anything about the zoning is because it's not about zoning tonight. What they're asking for is to change the general plan amendment, which is what tells them what kind of zoning they can ask for.
I see.
To PUD. And then, then at a future date, they come back and they could say, we want PUDR, or we want PUDC, or or how, so all those questions you're asking, that you're saying you, you want to know, that's what they would do at the next meeting, if, if this were to be approved. This is just asking to change the general, um, the general plan to allow them to ask for that zoning.
Okay. So we wouldn't be, um, given that information at this time. It's just PUDs, it's general.
Yeah, nobody knows. They're, they're just saying they want to have the opportunity to ask for a PUD zoning.
Okay. Well, that answers a few of my questions.
That's why we, we're not, we don't even address those questions at this stage.
Well, thank you for answering that question, those questions. Uh, that's all I have.
All right. Thanks. One other thing I just want to point out is as a planning commission, we're a recommending body. So what we do is we have a vote on the, on, uh, this, an item like this at the end of, uh, hearing the discussion and we send that to city council with our recommendation for approval or a recommendation for denial. Uh, in my tenure here, I have sent things to city council that we've approved and they've denied it. And I've sent things to city council that we've denied and they've approved it. So we're here to get the public input, get it on the record, supply city council with everything that we can with our recommendation, and that's the purpose of, uh, of our meeting here this evening. You guys are asking great questions. We'll try to get you as many answers as we can. Is there anybody else would like to speak to this particular item before I close the public hearing? Okay. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and I'll turn the time back over commissioners, uh, to each of you for any comments or additional questions for staff.
Drew, this commissioner, could you show the, uh, the floodplain map over that or overlay it?
I'm going to have to zoom out before we pick up the floodplain. The blue areas are the floodplain. So we know water comes through here, but it's not a designated floodplain. Yeah. That's, you see all these blue, you know, this is the Mill Creek. And these are different, just main wash, you know, that a lot of the, that comes from upstream, I guess is the best term, but this one's not. We know water comes through there. I'm not denying that.
The blue 100 year floodplain or something?
No, it's just under FEMA's, FEMA's designation. Yeah. But the Army Corps looks at all washes as something that need to be addressed, right? So. But FEMA's floodplain stuff is the blue.
I don't know if you know off the top of your head, Drew, I certainly do not remember exactly. The development to the north of Washington Parkway, are they doing anything with the wash there or is it going to remain there? Coming, will, will the wash still be there on the north side when that's developed?
Yeah, they'll, that's why that pipe was put in the ground and they kind of know that and they'll, they'll design all of their, their items too. And again, development always helps flood issues in every city. So here, because if you take this whole dirt area and it can all just kind of go wherever it, it wants, but as soon as you start developing, you start dictating those, those channels more, and you can add detention and retention and, and other piping and, and stuff to maintain and help address, you know, flood issues. So, um, that always helps the situation, development, no matter where it happens when it comes to flooding, you know, within, so.
So my thought, my question is, if, I guess, my thought is, when the development to the north is finished and it, let's just say for a second that nothing was done here. The improvements that they make on the north side of this, does it have potential to make this flooding here worse?
No, it probably has the potential to make it better. It would be more controlled, more directed. They can even keep it, you know, even hold back the water at certain places if they, if the design were, you know, is put in place to help that. So up here, we have nothing to stop anything other than the natural ground, right? To act as a, a dam or a buffer, but as they develop and put all their streets and everything in just to protect their product, their drainage is gonna gather and direct and push and pull and put it in places where it needs. This is really kinda cutting in and out. So that always helps. Yeah. That always helps those situations, so.
All right. Well, commissioners, here's where, here's what my thoughts are. Going out there and looking at the project site as recent as right before this meeting. I feel like Brian used the words, it feels like we're kinda squeezing out as much as we possibly can on different projects, things like that. Not knowing what would come to this, I, I feel comfortable, I would feel more comfortable if the green area in our, in our maps that we had, that there was more like that this, this, the usable space that we would allow this project to have would be less than what's being presented to us here this evening. This area here, you guys can see this up here. If, if that was green, because I, the, the, the area above Sundusk Lane between Washington Parkway and Sundusk Lane, in my opinion, isn't, that would, in my opinion, if something was put in there, that would be cramming something in there. And I didn't feel comfortable with it when I was looking at it. There's a vacant lot that you can see pretty well. You can see it on the map there, right as the road tees, where you get a really good idea of how far that is from Washington Parkway to the houses. If that area was taken off of this proposal, that would make my mind feel more at ease as long as the green area was kept there. I understand that, that something may and could and should or possibly be built in this area, but I don't know if I feel that way about the wash in that area right there. I feel like that should be left open. That's kinda my thoughts on it. With regards to the pink area that we were looking at in the corner there where the civic was, I personally don't have a problem with that in the future being something. But I think that there does need to be a, a smaller usable amount of land than what I'm seeing on this particular.
This Commissioner, but I think that when the development comes in, however it's designed, it might be a smaller building there because of the way that it's designed. I don't think we, we know yet. I think it's, you know, that Washington Parkway is going to be very busy road. This will act as a buffer. I mean, rather than just nothing there. Whatever, whatever decides to go in here. I mean, if it's commercial or administrative, that's not gonna be a bad neighbor to have. I wouldn't think they're far enough away. And it's gonna quiet the road down that's going by it. That's, those are my opinions on it. I'm sure we'll, I'm sure we'll have some sort of trail system that.
Oh, yeah.
Is there a trail system, Drew, that goes anywhere through any of that? Do we know yet?
I'll bring up the trails, proposed trails.
In looking at the site, Pete, I can understand where you're coming from. Looking at the site, I also had trouble envisioning it because of the, the different elevations coming off Washington Parkway up to the houses and, and how that was. Personally, I had a hard time envisioning something being built in there and that led to why I said what I said, but yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so all the dashed yellow lines, green, whatever neon color you wanna call that is, is master plan trails, so. And, and, and the PCD took care of that. In fact, they've enhanced and done a lot of cool things you'll see. But this is where they probably have to come out and tie onto the Parkway at Main Street and at this other crossing. You can see that's right across, cause that's where we're at, right, is right.
Wasn't that subdivision that come before us on the east side of Main Street? Didn't, didn't it not have trail systems that run through there? I mean, I know they.
They have their own amenity area.
But wasn't it, wasn't it a public trail that went through there as well?
Talk about it. I don't.
Let me.
There was one that was gonna be cement and they changed to dirt.
No, it, it won't be there cause it's over in this, it's on the west side of, they had their own internal trail system.
It was on the east side.
It, it, it is and it's, cause if you go up there right now on Main Street, you'll see the, it's already built right there. On the backside of their wall and stuff, there's a 10 foot trail that goes up and then it makes the bend and it's on the south side of the Parkway right there.
I was, I was under the impression that they come in with condos and they were on the southeast corner right there or not, not necessarily.
Yeah, they had it as part of their roadway design up here on the north end of it. But internally, all the trails you saw was for their own amenity.
Okay.
Is what it was. They did put a trail system in there, but it was just for their own.
Their own.
Cause they have a floodplain area and I mean, not, it's not a floodplain. It's where they have the flooding wash area that.
Which this.
It also has, there's a fault line in there as well. That's why they made it all an amenity area.
I'm like, this will, this will more than likely have something along those lines through it as well in the wash and along the.
It, this part of the, you know, I don't have the cross section for this road, unfortunately. It's, 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 right now it's 110 feet, but it's actually the, the full width of Washington Parkway, I think is 126 feet. And that includes trails that are offset from the road, meandering trails. Of course, with the power line easement that runs right through this area too and, but it, it's 120 feet. Even though this scales out right now at 110, there's still another 12, 12 to 14 feet that are part of this. That's the biggest roadway in the city, but it's gonna be a nice separated two lanes each direction. I think there're gonna be trails on each side and more than likely 10 foot walkways. You know, but the city trail will be designated as one of those on one side or the other. I'm not sure which one it is yet.
This Commissioner Tupow, I'm, I'm kind of on the same page as Commissioner Hanson. Where I would be okay with the civic zone being amended and leave the green space as open space.
Drew, was it, was there ever talk that a park was gonna go in here, a city park?
No, I'm not sure where that's come from. There was talk about doing a cemetery. Okay, but never a park.
Cemetery?
That, it's not gonna happen.
Okay, it's not gonna happen.
It's not big enough.
I tried to sell it right there.
We, we, years ago, we considered doing that. That's why SITL put it in a civic thing because they were thinking maybe down the road, then this was a good 13, 15 years ago, I remember that. And that's why that was put in that bubble right there, cause they thought about doing a cemetery, but never a park.
Any comments on this side?
Well, this is Sheil. I'm, I'm with you. I'm fine with that corner piece. I would be fine with, with coming along the frontage on Washington Parkway, but not all the way back. I think we need to have a barrier between the houses and, and that. But I think you could have some, some retail or office space on that frontage. I think that, that right pink area is a waste. There's a church right there.
That's what that part is, is where that church is going.
So, but where your cursor is, if you come straight across with that cursor tie into the pink over, yeah. That's kinda where I am. Then I would leave all the green and, and, and back towards the houses, which is really the wash. That's, that's how I would say, but. So if, if we do accept this, is it my understanding that if they come in with a PUD, then they still have to come in and get, they, they show buildings and plans and we can say yea or nay to that, correct? So that's probably the case where we are.
Yep. If they would still be, they would be coming in and have to do a zone change. They're just doing this to be able to apply for a PUD zone change. It just makes it, you know.
We're just trying to give them suggestions. Is, is that fair that we're doing that or are we wasting our time?
Well, I'm, I'm not talking, cause are you, so I'm not clear with everybody. Are you talking about on this map alone? Or you, are you, or are you going to the general plan map itself or? Cause I, I guess I'm, for clarity, it'll help me, I mean, are you talking about giving them the pink, the white and the blue on this side of the green or no blue, just the pink whitish area?
That's what I am. That's what I'm saying.
To PUD?
I'd like to see less buildable space. I don't know if I'm all that concerned about what's built there. We'll deal with that another time. But I would, I can understand and appreciate why I would want to see more open space left between the houses and whatever area we end up allowing somebody to build something.
So do we table it and have them come back with a new plan? Is that what you do?
We definitely can ask the applicant if they'd like to speak. They could come up and give us something if, I don't.
Latia, what's your, what's your, what's your opinion on the blue? Cause that's, we keep talking about the green, but the blue right now is currently green. And they're, they're asking to, to change it from greens. So you, you just said leave the green, but again, I guess you too, what, what's your opinions on the blue? That's my question. All three of you.
Oh, so.
Just for clarity.
I'll try to, go ahead.
I think a portion of the blue on the Parkway could be encroached and, and build, build a set of buildings there.
Up here?
Yeah, right. But, but not.
Not toward the houses.
Leave a buffer between the houses on that development and then go into the corner. And the corner could actually have some buildings in there that, that you have a drive through. But the other ones are gonna be basically a front load building.
That's why I wanted to clarify, cause I think you're talking about nothing. You wanted them to remain green from the Parkway down to the subdivision. And then Commissioner Sheil wants to give them a little bit, go ahead and do it, but tell them they're gonna have to be up toward the Parkway. You know, with everything, cause there's, I think there's 250 feet from the Parkway right away to the subdivision. So that's why I wanted to clarify, cause I felt like we were talking about two different. And I, and I don't know which one you're aligned with, Commissioner Anderson. Yeah. That, that's why I wanted to clarify, cause I, I think you guys are, you're saying the same kinda words, but you're, I, I just felt there was a different meaning on what to give partial or not. You, you say.
Saying no to the blue.
To the blue area. Okay. You're saying give some blue area and yeah.
I'm more, I would ask, if I was to put myself on one of those two coins, I'm more to Sheil's idea. I can understand some pink on the Parkway, if you will, but I think there does need to be a buffer between Sun, Sundusk Lane, because the, the elevation changes in there are pretty dramatic. And so I just felt that. I couldn't imagine them coming in and grading that out and, and having homes backing up to sun or homes or whatever that would be allowed to come in there and be backing up to Sundusk. And with there being a natural wash in there, it makes it easier for me to say, just take the majority of that blue area. Keep it as it is. If there's something that's allowed up there, I would be more understanding to that. So I guess I'd put it on, on more on, on, on Sheil's side. But I understand both.
So this is, this Commissioner Anderson, I, as, as a matter of principle, I don't like changing general plans, like onesie twosie. It really bothers me. Again, if this was, if this was a zoning, like changing it out of open space zoning or whatever, and it was already general plan something, you know, that, that is part of the property, right? So I, I don't like changing general plans. I, I think that, and I, and I understand what you said, Drew, where it's not like exactly tied to meets and bounds. It's not exact borderline where that is. So I, I get that. I wish it was a little more specific. I, I, I would rather the city council had some of these open spaces delineated out more, you know, exact, so we had a, a better idea, right? Cause I, I don't like, you know, onesie twosie, changing the general plan. I think that's the purview of city council on a larger scale. But with, with that said, I also know, I mean, some, a lot of this, you know, settler land and so forth, bigger pieces. I mean, with some of the land, like, like the green, the big Greenspring projects and so forth. You know, there was, part of that was, was open space and, and other was, you know, general plan is all sorts of things. But, but in that type of a project, it was big enough that, you know, when it went to PUD, they brought the plan. They were still able to keep the same amount of open space, just kinda shuffle it around and make, to where it made sense for the project. But we still had the same amount of open space. Where this is such a small piece and we're just talking about, you know, gutting the open space. It's, it's a little hard to, to preserve any of it. We just, you know, gut it, so. Anyway, I'm, I'm a little torn there, but as far, if, if we're talking about just practicality, I think Sheil has a good idea. I, I think there's, there's value to the top part where, you know, at least if it were commercial, like, like retail commercial along the Parkway. But I think the part of the open space, general plan, I mean, it states in there is to help to buffer differing, you know, zoned areas and to protect wash, you know, drainage and so forth. I'm, I'm, I think that strip for sure is way too small going through that wash. I don't have any problem with, with the civic being turned into, you know, PUD. But I think if, if we're going to do something, I think it would be something more like, like what Drew just drew there.
That's what I'm more.
But I will say that I would rather that city council had it more specific.
What's, how many feet have you got from the road to the house?
I measured, I put it up on there. I think it's 255. So I'm not sure. I mean, you're the commercial guy. I don't know how much depth you would need.
It needs to be bigger.
I'd like to say no, but I'll let you do it. Go ahead. Oh yeah, you gotta, it's just so it's on the record, otherwise it does you no good.
I just, where you've drawn the red line, I understand the intent there, but where you've curved close to where the cul-de-sac comes up from Graham Manor there, and you can see how close you've got that red line to the edge of the subdivision, where it curves around the P, the pink civic area there. That's another area. I've, I've lived at 1141 Graham Manor for 10 years and I've watched this wash flow many years. And it is slowly, as it hits that top portion of the subdivision, the water as it's coming down, it's bent around. It's like a barricade there and it's swept around and taken out more and more. And it's caused actually where that green area is to be a wider, it's wider part of the wash. If you look at the area, the aerial of it. And I think you can also see the buffer, if you've gotten it real tight to that top portion of the subdivision. And I think that it would be very beneficial if that open space carried that same buffer around the whole top portion of the subdivision because of the wash in that area and how the water channels around that top portion. It definitely widens out. So you can see that if you look at aerial a little bit more. It's eaten away about 30 or 40 feet of the, the, the side of the hill there. You can see it sweeps around over the past seven years.
Right, just, yeah, not the, cause, but I, I understand what you're saying, cause that's what water does and rivers and washes all do the same thing. But if they come in and develop, that will not be left. They'll, they'll define that channel.
Right. So we were talking about buffer and that's all I was saying is, is where you've drawn that line. You may just wanna consider keeping that buffer a little wider because of where the wash is and that location. And the open space used or designated for, for that being a wash.
So I didn't mean to really go anywhere specific. I was just giving them, yeah, I get what you're saying, so.
I was just bringing it up because of how tight and you can see what the recommendation is there for the blue and how it, it does get, you know, closer to the top portion of that subdivision. That's, that's all I was.
All right, thanks, Brian. Thanks. I think, yeah. Drew, I was gonna say that line, we're not defining where it's at on this thing. It's just general idea. It's good to have that as another comment on there. And is, is there any chance that the engineer of this project is here in the audience that could?
Well, yeah, he is.
Talk to us a little bit about this and, yeah.
Thanks for your time. Bob Hermanson with Push and Gudgel. Appreciate all the comments. Thank you for thinking through it with us as well. So the anticipation is to, all of the channel improvements will be completed for the job when it's designed and that would be in, designed in conjunction with the PUD submittal with, with the project as an entirety. And that was really to answer most of or all of your questions. And to Drew's point earlier, the intent here is to get to the point where we can present something to even have the discussion to, to illustrate the intent of the improvements of the wash, the property as it sits, what's gonna be there, where it's gonna be and how it would work in relationship to the houses and the spacing between the northern road and also the existing residents and the wash, so that we have a complete package. So the intent here is to just get to the point where we can have that discussion that we're all trying to have at this meeting. And that's, that's the struggling point is, is I, I don't have that here today because I can't do it. And then at that point, if, if it either met the city requirements and it worked out for what the uses were and where it was and why and how it worked and we justified the area on the, really the biggest discussion feels like it's the, the right or the east blue area. And it worked far, as far as the overall submittal, then, then so be it. Then that would be part of the PD submittal and approval. But at this point, we're just looking to and wanting to have that discussion. And so the additional armoring on the opposite side that was just added, again, all of that will be channelized and improved through, through, with the city in, in joint effort. to make sure that not only the proposed project, but also the existing homes would also be safer, right? So that it'll be armored and channelized. And so we don't have this problem that's being referred to in this meeting. And so that's the, we are fully intended to do all of those things. And so, but again, can't propose those things because we, we're not there yet.
Yeah. I should have had you come up first.
I, I have a question. This is Commissioner Anderson. So if we, and I, I totally understand that actually the more, the more we develop that area, the better, the, the, the less likely the flooding is because it's going to improve the area. But if we, if we narrow the channel, are, are you talking about, you know, rip wrapping or, or retaining or whatever the backside of those homes there to protect that side? As we're, as we're channeling the water a little bit better through there?
Yeah. So to, to be clear, the intent would not be to, to narrow the existing channel would be, it would be sized accordingly to what's coming from the upstream side. And obviously the, all of the future improvements that have been proposed on the north side as well, we'd be working with them as well to understand that. But in general, what's coming through there, we would anticipate continuing. And then yes, there would be armoring and protection along both of those sides is what we are anticipating to, to protect all of it, to the new stuff and the old, old items as well. So all of the items are great discussion points. And honestly, I've walked it several times. Great, good points. That first curve up there, up there on that northern cul-de-sac lot, that shaded area. That, that's clearly an issue that, yeah, it needs to be armored, whether it's this development or somebody else, it ought to be armored. And also continuing down to the south on the, just to the south, if you look all the way along those, that home edge of Drew, if you wouldn't mind panning down along the side, that next curve, that guy right there. There's, there's issues all the way across there that would be, would be cleaned up with the development. Again, all of this would be a package and you would see all of it in that. So you can, we can go through and talk about all of these things in detail and what's being proposed to justify all of the spaces, but without having to do it. And we, you know what I mean? It just, I'm just trying to get there to be able to have a discussion.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I think our big concern here is one, that the, the drainage is, is improved, protected, et cetera, which I, I think the development will actually make it better. But the second thing, when we're talking about a buffer, we just want to make sure there's enough of a buffer between the existing homes and, and what's above it, that they're not just backed up to each other. I think that's, that's the second part of concern there.
Sure. And it, my thought process there is, is that once we have that, we can actually, with that guidance, we can submit a plan to you and you guys can review it and decide if it works or not. And so the, the thought of just, you know, trying to utilize that and how are we going to use it? Is it going to come from the, from the east or the west side? Is it going to come from our access off of the road on the left side of the west side of the culvert? You know, all of those things as a package, you would be, have the ability to review and, and see if it works or not. And so that's the, that's the intent. It's all great questions and I asked myself the same questions a hundred times and trying to work through that, but, but this is where we're at right now.
Anything else for Bob? Bob, thanks. I appreciate it. Looks, I mean, I, you're very clear, honestly, or in what you're saying, you understand what the comments for the community are from us. As a layperson looking at this, it's like, there's going to be a house right behind mine and that's not what we're saying. And I know you can take that back and, and know that that's very sensitive to the buying, the, the community buy-in and the city buy-in on this too. So. I definitely want to say that, that Brian said it, we definitely, I personally wanted to make sure that we don't get something in the future where it looks like we just squeezed as much in there as we could in this particular area. And that's all. So.
Yeah. And that, and then we, we agree. We, when, when, once we submit the full plan, if it's, if the, if it goes forward and gets over to city council and it was approved the way we were presenting, then, then we can have all of those discussions, right? In detail. And, and, and then you guys can either 86 it there or not, or whatever we can work through. But right now I can't even work through it. So.
Do you know what the setbacks are from the road to the building? What's required?
I would anticipate it's, it's 25 feet. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I was thinking 60. Building 60, then 60 behind the building. You got 180 feet. Leaves you about 50 feet.
Yeah. So, so the intent is, and, and I saw.
Because that'd give you parking and a big enough building to do something with.
Sure. And that, and, and I think the, the intent of the sketch lines that were there and it basically fronting along Washington Parkway in that linear fashion. My anticipation would that be that that building would be in that direction pushed to the north. And then you would have access and parking on the south side of that to create that buffer. So along the same lines, but in order to do that, the whole thing, that's why I'm presenting that it's general plan this way, so that I can submit an entire plan that can make all of it work together. If it's just a, a piece of it, then, then, then I have way more constraints and I can't create the buffer because I can't physically get to the property with the access points from Washington Parkway. Yeah. So that's, so incorporating, this is a, all the developments unique, but this specific one, those are the constraints. I've only got very limited access. I have to be out of the room to work that so that we can put those buildings where they need to be. So they're as far away in this, in this question, as far away as possible to the north.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else commissioners that you have for staff or?
Well, and.
I guess Bob even.
The fact that it's a PUD and it's not, we're not trying to go to straight zoning or anything like that. We have a lot more say when it finally gets to us. So if we don't just do, I believe if we do this, then we can, we can make the setbacks or make a buffer or do all that stuff when the PUD comes to us. You know, because that's where we can, we'll have more control over what goes here if it's a PUD. So I believe that it's, and city council will. So they'll be able to make stricter and look at it closer. So I think doing what they ask for gives us, because yeah, if you want that buffer, you can get it in the PUD. Instead of trying to send it back and do all this other stuff. If we just get it to the PUD, then we can actually narrow it down and, and hammer it out. That's, that's my opinion on it.
This is commissioners. I, I, I agree. I mean, I think this is kind of like our general feelings. We want to make sure we protect some, you know, some space, some goalies and so forth. But yeah, if we, because there's no meets and bounds tied to this general plan, even if we drew a new line or whatever, it doesn't necessarily get us what we want. Having, having them submitted as a PUD gets it a lot more specific where we can see exactly how many feet, how many this, what type of drainage, what type of.
A lot more flexibility in that to say.
And the engineer, he's, he's right. He, he can show us exactly what, you know, could fit there and we can say yes or no. And we can put a lot more restrictions or, or suggestions on that. But the public, when he's, when the engineer was talking about armoring the, the drainage, what he's meaning is, is lining the hillsides with rock and, and fabric and so forth, and protecting them from erosion. But.
Yeah. And the, and last thing, comment before I, I'm going to look for a motion here. And second, yeah, for everybody here is that when this does come before us as a PUD, if assuming that it is approved to go through that process, that opens it back up for the public to see what's being presented as well. And to come in and we'll have another open, an open session, a public hearing where you can come in and do the same thing, but yet you get to see what's on there as opposed to what we're talking about this evening. So hopefully we address your comments, your concerns. I'm going to go ahead and commissioners, ask if, if there's any final comments. I'll certainly entertain them. If not, I'll look for a motion some way, one way or the other to vote on this particular item.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval for G-2303 to amend general planned use map from the current CV and open space to the planned unit development, PUD and open space designation as outlined in the exhibits. I move this on to city council. Commissioner Anderson, a second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bullock. I have a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting two po.
Give me a nay.
Bullock?
Aye.
Sheel?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an aye as well. The motion passes and what we'll do is send this to city council with all the comments, the things that were submitted. They obviously have been here. They have a chance to watch this as well. And we'll send this to them with our recommendation that they approve this and let the developer take it to the next step where we can see what they want to bring here. And we'll go from there. Any other questions? You can address that to the city later this week. Yeah.
We just want to let them know that meeting will happen in a week from tonight. Same time, same room. Different group.
You mean, you mean the city council meeting? Correct?
Five? Oh, you moved your meeting up because of? We'll talk, it's six o'clock, it's six o'clock city council meeting. So a week from tonight, right here. And then, then the city council will vote on that.
I'm used to being the dumbest guy in the room. I'm glad you guys came. Thanks. All right. For those, I know, I believe a lot of you are here for this particular item. If you'd like to go ahead and leave, that's fine. I'll wait a couple of seconds so there be less, the least amount of disruptions as possible. Otherwise, we're going to move on to the next item. Thank you for coming. I guess what I'm going to do actually is I'm going to adjourn just for a couple of minutes for a restroom break. Maybe probably five minutes. So if anyone needs to do that, we'll reconvene here in five minutes. All right, Melody, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. We're going to continue our meeting this evening on item number. Yeah, that was four A, five A. This is a public hearing as well for consideration and recommendation to the city council for desert flower phase two. The preliminary plat located approximately Desert Cactus Drive and Bella Vista Drive. The applicant is civil science and I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the desert flower phase two subdivision located at approximately Desert Cactus Drive and Bella Vista Drive. This particular subdivision is proposing eight lots on an area covering 1.57 acres. The amenities for this phase include a basketball court, shaded canopy area and open landscaped area. The zoning designation at this location is planned unit development residential. The surrounding zoning is planned unit development residential to the north, east, south and west. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the desert flower phase two subdivision onto the city council. And that's based on the findings and subject to the following conditions as seen in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks Eldon. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions.
Maybe I'll just note real quick there to the south of the homes, there's a small line with some arrows that, that's going to pick up some drainage there and divert it over to the existing stormwater basin. I think there was a few public comments concerning water issues. And our city engineer, Paul Mogul noted that out to me that, that that line will catch the water and divert it into the existing stormwater basin.
Eldon, this is Commissioner Anderson. I'm going to, I, I would have asked John, but he's not here. I don't see him here anyways. So I'll let you take a stab at it. Some of these questions talked about issues, issues between the city and phase one that hadn't been addressed. Says drainage and another one talking about Horizons West along the south wall. You know what these are or what, what the issues are, or how they relate to the community or whatever?
I'm not. I, I would need further details. I, with my time here, I'm not aware of, of those existing problems.
Thanks. Is the applicant here? Does he know what? Answer that.
Eldon, thank.
It's just what it said in some of the comments. So I'm just trying to understand what it's referring to.
Eldon, thanks. Appreciate it. So before we open this up to the public hearing, the same thing as those of you that were here on our first item this evening. We received comments on that as well. We also received comments on this. Molly Francis, Richard Towne, Robert Larson. And that's all that I had. I believe I received an earlier copy of the comments. There may be an additional one that maybe somebody sees if not, or if you didn't hear your name and it was submitted. If the developer, if you wouldn't mind coming up, please. Hey, how's it going? Could you state your name for the record again?
Yeah. James Jessup.
James, I remember when you came. James, I remember when you came and we went through this project, or the first time, for Desert Flower Phase One, and some of the people there at the time were talking about flooding and things like that. Some of the comments that we received are in relation to that with regards to, they feel like they're having some flooding issues, and they're not hearing back from you whether or not you're hearing, you're getting, the information is getting to you. It sounds like no, but I wanted to, I guess I want to ask you, but then, at this point, you're not aware of any flooding issues you're having from the first phase that you did?
From what I know, the retaining wall that we put along their existing retaining wall diverted all their drainage into the basin.
Okay.
So I'm not sure.
Perfect. That's fine, and I'm not suggesting there are. I'm just, because I remember when this first came to us, a lot of the comments that we received, I went out there afterwards and I thought, well, that's not true, that's not true, that's not true. And I learned a lesson at that time. I was like, wow, I'm not going to believe what I'm reading, but I just want to make sure. If you're aware of something, let us know now, because when we open this up to the public to come up, if it's the first time you're hearing it, I want to make sure you knew I was going to, I would like you to come back up and try to address some of them, because last thing, I would want to urge this, this recommending body to do is look at recommending something where there's a problem that's gone unsolved that we didn't anticipate or expect based on talking to you the first time. So I know you're willing and happy to take care of it, so.
Definitely. In the beginning, there was a drainage that went underneath Bella Vista Drive. It hit the wall, but that's in the Desert Flower Phase One subdivision. So that's all been diverted down Desert Seguaro Lane or Desert Sage Lane there. The HOA from Horizons West did ask, so there's a slope from the drainage basin down to the wall as, you know, the maintenance road that's going along there. They asked me to take over the maintenance agreement that I had agreed. We signed an agreement at Desert, when we finished Desert Flower. They have a bunch of their roof gutters going over that wall and draining on the backside of the wall, so on the, on our property. And there's a swell behind those units that takes it down to a storm drain. If you scroll out and go to the left, my left, then there's a basin down there that it drops into. I was okay that they drained that, their water onto that property as long as they maintained that. And so we signed an agreement with their HOA that they were willing to do that if we didn't make them redo their rain gutters and do all, redo all their drainage and put it back onto their property.
Okay.
Maybe that's what they're talking about.
We'll see. I just want to make sure that if this is the first, because you were very upstanding with us the first time I saw you. I haven't seen you since then. I now, I like the project that you built. I've driven through there a couple of times. I like what I see there. So here, just want to make sure that I'm trying to be fair with you, because what I read, there's people that are not happy. So I want to see if we can figure out a solution to that, so.
Sounds good.
Just be ready. All right, thanks. So what I'm going to do is open this up to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is Molly Francis here by any chance? No? Darn it. All right. I'm going to open it up to the public hearing, and I know that there's four or five of you that I had mentioned that you had submitted your comment. If you want to get up and if you can be respectful of just a few minutes, I don't have a problem. If you want to come up and talk about what you submitted to us, as the developer hasn't received that, and that way he can hear that, so we could try to get a resolution. We'll go ahead and start there. If somebody'd like to come up and start this off, please state your name for the record, and please be respectful of a three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Brian Taylor. I live in Horizons West. I'm in unit 50, which is adjacent to the retention basin and adjacent also to the proposed area that would be the landscaped area. I think I can answer some of the questions you had with regard to the flooding. The flooding that you may have received comments on is not along the retaining wall between the units. If you could pan to the left a little bit so we could look, thank you. When Phase One was developed and approved, the requirement for the retention basin was part of that approval. In building that retention basin, the dirt that was removed from the retention basin was not removed from the area, but it was replaced in this area. And you can see from this picture, they created mountains with the dirt that came out of that retention basin. And you can see in that picture, at the end of the retention basin going west, if you look at the, right at the edge of the border wall between Horizons West and the retention basin area, you can see the effects of that, of that dirt that was placed there.
Is that picture you just showed us, what Drew just circled there? Is that right there, correct?
No, it's further to the south, or to the west. A little bit further to the west. Yeah, it's right in there. Yeah.
That's around the corner and down. I don't think I could see that from where the road ends, because I was out there looking.
Yeah, so you can see it from where the road ends.
You think I can?
Through the fence.
Okay.
So that's created problems for Horizon West in many ways. Before, before this was developed as Phase One, we had a drainage area at the, it'd be the south side of the Horizons West wall that drained into a catch basin on the far west end of that property, where the city installed a catch basin that took the water out, put it into the drain system, and drained it over to Sullivan Park. Since the dirt that was removed, it was placed in that area at the far west end of that property, it has virtually eliminated the drainage for that and caused drainage to accumulate against our wall and actually under the footings on that wall. And now we have homeowners, the last, four of the last five homes in that picture, have had flooding issues. They've had to install some pumps at their expanse, and that water is being diverted off onto what's, what's labeled there as Horizons West Road. This flooding didn't occur until that dirt was dumped there that came out of the retention basin. It's, every time it rains, we, we have widows along that area that lay awake at night in fear that that wall's, that whole mountain's going to come down. This is what it looks like from the patio of one of our homeowners. That dirt did not exist until it was placed there by the developer when they placed, when they dug it out of the retention basin. If you were to reach over that wall and extend your arm, you're probably only about four feet away from touching that dirt. When that dirt was dumped there, there was no requirement for retention. There was no armoring of that to prevent any erosion, and it continues to erose, erode, erode, excuse me. This is another picture that clearly shows the erosion that's been taking place. This is as of yesterday. So this shows the effects of the recent rains we've had, and you can see the erosion on here. The slope on that, on that hill that they built in dumping that is probably estimated 75 to 80 degrees, 85 degrees. And in some cases, it's vertical, which means that water has no, no room to percolate into the soil, and instead is running off and bringing with it gravel, rocks, and even boulders that are now laying against the footings of our wall. The issues we have with this proposed expansion is that we feel that the developer needs to remedy the issues that remain with Phase One before they're allowed to continue to expand into Phase Two. This has caused a major problem for us. The, they've created a hillside that is now eroding into our wall. We don't have access to the backside of that wall because of the dirt that's sloughed off from that dirt pile, and in some cases is leaning two to three feet deep against the backside of that, that border wall, which we're responsible for. I'd like to address the agreement that Mr. Jessup mentioned. That agreement, we've had legal counsel look at that agreement, and they've counseled us that that agreement is not effective. It was never proposed before the Board of Directors in place at the time. They were unauthorized to incur any expense for the maintenance of property that they did not own. That is not property. That's property of Horizons West. That's the developer's property. The Board of Directors of Horizons West has no right to obligate the association for the continued maintenance of that property. That's his. And in the, in the recorded plat that you guys approved and the city council approved, the maintenance of that area is the main, is the responsibility of the developer, not Horizons West. So we feel that this ought to be tabled at the very least and probably denied at the, at the most until this, this issue that I've just explained is rectified. We would suggest that that dirt be removed and, and a slope of no more than 45 degrees toward the, the border wall remain. It will continue to erode, and it's, it's growing closer and closer. These last rains we've had the last several months have brought that even closer to that wall. And it's only a matter of time that that's going to hit that wall and probably on those last four or five homes, probably enter the backyards of those homes. We feel that's a responsibility of the developer that should have been addressed at the time and wasn't, and has continued to remain a problem for our subdivision. Our subdivision's been there for 30 years. We just celebrated the 30th anniversary of Horizons West. At the time that was developed, we had clear views of almost 360-degree views, and now we're being encroached by these developments. And it's not in the best interest of the 91 homeowners who live in Horizons West to allow this to continue. The other thing, if you could pan back to the beginning of the.
All right, let's wrap this up, okay?
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to represent two, two entities. One is the Board of Directors and then myself. If I could have six minutes, I'd appreciate that.
I'm trying to represent a city, so just be respectful of what I'm asking, so yeah.
So the area that they're proposing the basketball court be, be built is just adjacent to my home, so I'm speaking personally now. They've also indicated that they want to put a landscaped area in parking at the very east end of that retention basin. There's not enough room. If you go out and walk that property, there's not enough room to provide any, any kind of, of adequate parking in there. The basketball court is going to create a nuisance for anybody around it. I was going to bring a basketball and sit here and dribble it while I spoke, but I'm not that coordinated. But it's going to cause noise issues that will continue into the night. I don't know if they will allow for any lighting, but the other basketball courts that they've built east of this development has lights all around it, as well as a pickleball court. It's going to, it's going to eliminate our dark skies. It's going to create a noise nuisance for anybody who lives around there. It's going to be a gathering area for people. We have security issues. Right now, we have maintenance issues with the association, Desert Flower Association. They, they have failed to maintain any kind of maintenance along that wall. And we, we feel it should be denied until some of these issues are addressed and probably denied the basketball court and the other amenities. That is not the highest and best use of that property. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Can I, can I ask you a question? I guess, I do have a question for you. So as you stated, this is, this is not Horizon West property. This is, you know, the developer's property, but are any of Horizon West homes draining water onto this property?
They are, and they have since the inception of the, of the subdivision.
Right. But again, whether it was done before they came here or not, you're just saying that you can't drain water onto other people's property unless you have an agreement with them to do so. So if, if the, if the agreement in place took care of that, and now you're saying that it's invalidated, then Horizon West has an issue with figuring out how to take care of all of the gutter drainage from all those homes. So I mean, that, you can't have it both ways.
Well, I understand what you're saying. Our legal counsel has looked at that agreement.
No, I know. I'm just saying you can't drain water onto someone else's property, even if you were there first. It's just not how it works.
Well, that was a natural drainage, and in fact, let me explain to the, to the west end of that, the city actually put in a catch basin that's there and exists, has existed the entire time to, to allow drainage that comes off the hill that would be to the south of this property. That has been there, and the city actually came out at least twice a year and maintained that.
But that's different than, than people's gutters draining onto.
Gutter, gutters on, we, we have a few drains that come off of patio covers. It, it's, it's minimal.
I'm just saying, and again, I don't, I'm not trying to belabor the point. I'm just saying you can't have it both ways. If you either have an agreement with them or you don't, if you don't, you can't drain water onto his property, and you'll have to figure out how to deal with that.
I appreciate your comment, but that's, that's totally opposite from our legal counsel's advice, so.
All right, thanks again, Brian. Anybody else like to come up? And remember to please state your name for the record. Thank you.
I'm Suzanne Taylor. My house is also behind the basketball court. And I'd like to address, first of all, the water issue. Our legal counsel was that all water drains downhill. Do we need to remove our gutters, which are just our patio covers? And he said, absolutely not. There's a, and you'll just have to look at your own legal counsel on that. But he said, because all water drains downhill, that we do not have to remove those. Just, that was just a law that he quoted and told us about, and that, I don't know the rest of it, so. My concern is the noise. Since Desert Flower's gone in, we have a lot of fireworks going off on weekends. I imagine it might be weekend people that come, a lot of dogs barking, and people at the opposite end of our subdivision ask, who are the dogs barking? They think it's my dog. It's not. We have, we have at any one time probably 30% of our people that are recovering from surgery or on hospice or sick, and we move in there for quiet enjoyment. As 55 and older, we do have some protection that way. I just feel like that it's going to be noisy. I know a lot of people that, if you'll drive down that first street next to us on a Sunday morning, you'll see fireworks out in the street that they've lit off, and it's year-round. And I just see that parking area as a nice place for them to go and light off their fireworks. And I just don't feel like we can have the quiet enjoyment that we deserve to have for so many people that our majority are over in their middle 80s. Also, I would just propose that the basketball court could be put at the other end, at the east end, and not have a parking lot, because if it was at the east end, most people could walk to it, and you wouldn't need a parking lot, and it would protect us from the lighting and from the constant basketballs.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Beach, and I'm in the fourth house up. And so the, the hillside is very close to my patio. I'm one of the little gals who lays awake at night fearing that the mud's going to come sliding into my house. My husband and I bought our house in Horizons West four years ago, my late husband. And when we moved in, the first year is when Desert Flowers started their construction, and that dirt berm that was behind our house was increased in height by one-third. And all of that loose dirt and boulders with the recent rains has been coming down the hillside. And it's, 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 it's an issue. There should have been armor there if it was stacked up that way, because the erosion is a menace and a danger to the homes that are there. And I want to say thank you to each one of you for your service in the community. Having been involved in city government, I know that it can be a thankless job. So thank you.
Thank you. Thousand points for that lady right there. Lynn, thank you. Anybody else?
Janil Larson, and I, my husband and I also live in Horizons West. And we went out to just kind of look at this area just to see how bad it was, because we had been over to two or three different neighbors, and they had water in their back patio this deep. And it is like that every time it rains, because it comes off that berm and floods their place. So we walked down in between the berm and the, the south wall of Horizons West. It starts out pretty decent, where you probably could get a cat in there to clean it up. But the further you get down to the bottom, there is not room even for a person to walk down through there. And so we kind of mucked down there just to see just what we were dealing with. And that's when we could see all the boulders that were running down towards Lynn Beach's house. But there's no drainage there. The berm has, has sloughed off so much dirt that there is no water that runs down there. It just kind of goes into the ground. But I would like to have each one of you on the planning committee zoning to walk that south wall and just see what we're up against before you make any decisions to let them go on with a, with another phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Berlaine Scott. I'm in number 55 in Horizons West. The issue isn't just roof water going over. It's a natural drainage, and there was water coming before there was any roof water going in it. So it's a natural drainage, and that hill has moved. So it's a natural drainage and that hill has moved the water closer to our wall. That's the big issue. The second issue I have, if on top of that is supposed to be a service road for Washington City. Since that subdivision came in, it's no longer a surface road, service road. It's, there's ATVs, there's bike, like dirt bikes. There's, I mean, I saw a pickup once. I don't know how they can, it's not a good road. And if it's a service road, it should be blocked off. But now it's a thoroughfare and there is a lot of dust going on now.
Anybody else?
My name is Richard Towne. I did make a comment. My main concern is, is that dirt wall behind our wall. I can't sleep at night because I'm afraid that's going to come into my, my house and bury it. There's some kind of an engineering problem there, I think, that wasn't addressed. That wall is too steep. We've got erosion on that wall from the rain and it's a worry. It's a real worry. I am very concerned about it and that was my main concern. The drainage, I am getting a little alkali on the wall from that drainage and that concerns me also. So I'm very concerned about this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have this question. Now, I'm sure somebody is going to want to shout out and answer, but it doesn't do any good because it's not getting recorded. So I'll say what the answer is if you shout it out. But the, those of you that have mentioned that you're concerned about, well, the way you're phrasing is that you're afraid, you're afraid you'll sleep at night because the dirt's going to crash in. If that dirt wasn't there, does that solve your problem?
Well, if it wasn't there, how far back would it need to go? Or could there be armament of, of rock wall, something to retain it? But it's way too close and it's way too steep.
Okay. I don't even know how to redress that. Do you want to come up and say that to the microphone so it could be on the record? You have a thousand points to your credit, so you should probably use them. I think it would be great because I want that on the record just to make sure.
Yes, as I said, when I moved into my home four years ago, the berm was one-third shorter than it is now. And it's a lot steeper and a lot higher. And so when the, the rain comes, the erosion, we've got rivulets down the sides of the hill where the, it's eroding. And I had a lot of pretty picturesque rocks along, in back of my patio in the beginning. Now they're down almost against the, the rock wall, my block wall because there's just sliding down the hill.
Yeah, when it was, when you first moved in, you said it was four years ago, I believe you said, right? And it would rain heavily. Was there any effect at your house or anything like that? Or is it just something you dealt with or what, how did you live with it?
When it rained, well, there was some flooding, but they mitigated that. What we're looking for is mitigation of all of this erosion and dirt and, and rocks coming down.
That was added? It was added from that time?
Yes, it was from the construction.
Okay. No, it's down there pretty far.
Well, it'll go straight up. No, no, right in the middle of the picture, closer to the houses, there's rocks and people and people and people and that's the berm right there.
Yeah, that's the berm. And at the top of that berm, there are telephone utility poles along there. And, and when our home was appraised, the lender was concerned that those utility poles would fall over on. Well, the appraiser assured them, no, there was no problem, that it was, it was secure enough. But now with the erosion, who knows if it's secure enough?
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Is anybody else on the-
So are they higher than the berm or lower than the berm?
Lower, a lot, lot lower. Anybody else like to speak to this item?
Second question.
Wow, you're really getting your money's worth. I've got about 30 seconds I'll give you, but go ahead.
I appreciate that. What, what you're looking at is, is an aerial view. You don't get the, the effect of the, the depth of that dirt that's against there. And is it, your question was, if that dirt wasn't there, would we have a flooding problem? Probably not because it would open up that channel that existed before and that rainwater could go to the, to the catch basin at the end of the west end. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And Commissioners, I'll turn the time back over to you for comments or questions. Mr. Jessup, if you could come up again somewhat close or even to the microphone, please. Now I don't know if you want us to ask questions or you have anything you want to say right out of the gate because it's going to end up in the same place.
I have a question for you. So my big question, I'm looking at this and I'm trying to think, I mean, so why is the berm there?
So the city maintenance road, that was an established height long-
Is the maintenance road between the, between the berm and the pond?
Yeah, so yes, it is, it's that flat road and it goes all the way down to 300. So that grade and their grade was there long before we ever showed up.
So, so what's the grade right now between the, the maintenance road and the base of their wall?
It's probably 20 feet in that particular spot.
The road is 20 feet higher?
Mm-hmm. And it's, it's always been that way. When we signed the agreement with their HOA, there was dirt three, four feet up on their wall at one time. And the agreement was we were going to go in-
Higher than there.
Yes, by about 20 feet, maybe 25 in some spots.
This is higher than the road.
No, 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 the road is the highest point. So it's a mountain sloping all the way down. And so when we did this, we, so the grade that we actually altered is from the pond that way. You'll see the dirt berm that's up, up on, up above the mountain or up, not, not really where they're looking, but right there. That caught a lot of the water and that actually drains back to the pond. So that dirt we put there, but the dirt, the, where the maintenance road is and their grade, those were there. And really, there was a lot of dirt up against their wall when we started developing, developing-
So did you guys dump any dirt there? Or how did it get to be just two-thirds higher, assuming that's correct?
I don't know how it can be two-thirds higher. That road was there long before we were there and they were there, long before we were there. So I didn't build up that road.
You didn't put dirt there though, right?
I, in that area, we did.
That's correct.
Yeah. But nothing right there, no.
You didn't put nothing there?
Mm-mm.
How, how are we all so confused on where this is at?
This is natural.
So yes, that's the area they're talking about. I'm a little confused at where the additional dirt.
Okay, let me ask a question.
Where is this picture taken from?
From the left.
This is down right here.
Four houses from the left. This picture was taken at the end. Who is 50? He's 50.
I did. This is over there.
Yeah, that looks more like at the very end of their subdivision.
Where's the road? Where's the road?
Melody, once we get this figured out, I'll try to make sure you have it for the notes.
So a question for you.
Yeah.
Is the berm higher than the maintenance road?
No, the, the road is the-
The road's the high point and it goes down from there?
Yeah, and that has been there. So you'll see the freshly graded slope on the outside of our pond. That's where we've cleaned up the slope. And then our agreement was we cleaned out, and there was, I mean, when we got there, there was three, four feet of just dirt up on these. These guys were getting flooded long before we showed up. The dirt shows it. So what we did is we got an excavator and dropped down there and we pulled all that up, cleaned out that, that ravine, or it's kind of like a waterway, that really what, what it's been doing is they've dumped their water over, the water from the mountains have been going and it's been pinched between that wall and there. And we went through and maintained it, cleaned it out with the agreement that if they want to keep dumping their water there, they'll maintain along their wall.
So you heard all the comments, so you, is this a fair statement that you don't, you would, you would say that you haven't done anything to contribute to the comments that they're suggesting?
No, the, the dirt was three, four feet up on their wall when we showed up. We dug it out to the satisfaction of their HOA.
Was it vegetated before or, I mean, right now it looks like it's just dirt.
It is all dirt, but it, and it-
Has it been ripraped or anything like that?
No, it hasn't been ripraped.
However, after, after that berm was done, we paid somebody to go along there and shovel by hand and, and dig everything out away from the wall and it's back.
But it's not because of anything he's done?
Is it because of the erosion?
They dumped all that dirt off the ground. These pictures probably demonstrate that.
I'm not really sure what to do because I believe you because I can't imagine the city's allowing you to do something that would contribute to this.
Yeah, as far as maybe on the very far end away from the houses, there's dirt there. I'll run down and look and see if we need to do some cleanup there. But along the edge of that, we, we haven't put dirt there. There wasn't enough dirt. That, I mean, the road is established.
Yeah, it was there.
We, we couldn't dump dirt off there or it would have gone straight into these homes. Yeah, the, the road's this high and the bottom of their wall is this high and that doesn't-
Let me do, let me just take about 30 seconds to sit here and think for a second how I want to handle this because what I want is no more comments from the stand, but I, or from the people. But I understand I'm here to help you, especially the guy laughing at me. I mean, I'm not here to try to shut you down, but when, when, when we first were building this, there was a lot of things that were said to us as a commission that were flat out untrue. And I learned my lesson, like I said earlier, from this community right here that we're talking about. So I want to believe you, but I've got a developer that's in front of me who I don't know, except when he brought his project. I'm not in your pocket, you don't know me, I don't know you. But I do know that the city maintains a standard that you have to follow in order to build what you did. Is that a fair assessment?
That is correct.
So I'm going to, I'm leaning to the side that the city's done what they're, what they said they needed to do, what they are legally required to do. What I'm trying to do is find out from the people's comments, the validity of them so I can help you. Because what we're, what you're saying or suggesting is that the city has allowed something to happen, a developer to do something that has put your houses in peril. I've never seen that. So I'm trying to convince myself to listen and do that, but when people are shouting at us or telling us or laughing at us, all that does is make me want to just shut it down and say, yep, go ahead and do your thing. Because I trust the city's going to do what you do. And that's not what I want. So I, I came and looked at this today and I looked down there and I didn't go all the way to the end. I could see as far as their detention pond or retention. And I was like, okay, I see what they did. But I didn't understand all the flooding. And so I'm, I'm, I'm empathetic to all the comments, trying to understand them, what they are and how we can get to some sort of a remedy or something. Because if there is a problem, I would expect you're a stand, I would assume you're a stand-up enough guy that you're going to fix it. But I, from what I know of my history at the city, they haven't allowed you to do something to aid to this and you're suggesting that you haven't. So I'm trying to reconcile the two. Drew, I want to turn to you and ask you for some advice if you can help me out here.
Hey, first, I, I got a, I've got a burning question that I've had from the beginning of all this. Did any of you contact the city and tell them that you had this issue going on?
Prior to tonight even?
This is what, this is what shocks me because usually we hear from people. I mean, if nobody's called in to us and we could have our public works guys go look at it, I mean, it's like we can't fix something we know is, is, isn't broke, right? So that was my first question, I'm going, but you stood, I mean, now, so what is it? Did anybody contact the city about this?
Yes.
Okay, who did you talk to?
Larson and I met with the city attorney.
The city attorney, did you call the public works department at all?
No, we met with them.
Or the planning department? I'm, I'm just saying because, and I, I'm, I'm not trying to point a finger, it's just that if this has been going on and, and I would have known about it or public works, we could have at least looked into and started, you know, because I, I don't want to sit here and wait. It's been two years since phase one went in, right? And I helped a few, none of them tonight, but the people that live up on the backside of phase one. I was out there with three or four property owners and we went through and we got some things taken care of. That's what I'm trying to tell you is that people did call us who lived directly behind those over there. So now I'm just, I'm not trying to, again, beat you, but you see what I'm saying is I don't, we're hearing about it tonight and I'd love to have heard about all this.
Can I please respond to that?
Please do.
City attorney.
Come up here and, because my stuff's on the mic, I want yours to be as well.
Yeah, Brian Taylor again. Bob Larson and I met with Mr. C Miller, city attorney. Explained the situation to him. Not once did he recommend that we contact Public Works or Planning and Zoning. He said that's, that's an issue between you and the homeowners and the property owners. So we, we felt we had no recourse at all to remedy this.
Yeah, but it, it, and maybe he didn't understand where you guys were coming from because when it's development happening, I want, I, I, I need to know about those things if I can because there's lots of things I can go nipping the butter. But I'm not, I'm not saying that they're wrong, you're right. I, I don't know right this. I'm looking at pictures that just confuse me that look like, because like I pointed, I don't know, it was you, I'm sitting there going, that stuff's been growing there for a long time, some of that stuff, a long time, years. You can't dispute it. It's, that's, that kind of weeds, we wish they could grow back where places have been scarred and it takes forever to get that kind of growth back. That what we call natural growth? That's natural growth of just the, the area, right?
That's not natural topology.
No, but I'm talking about some of these others.
This is some of the dirt that we reclaimed or dumped.
Someone, someone pointed out that you could reach over and grab these things all along. And I, I, again, I'm trying to see, I haven't been out there and I'm going to go tomorrow. I can tell you right now, I'm going to drive out just so I see what's going on.
We would advise you to do-
I don't want to get into debate, but I'm just, I wanted to ask who would come and see it. And so you, you went and saw the city, that's all I needed to know, that you did talk to somebody. I'll have that conversation with him, but, but again, I wish people would come, you know, talk to, to the planning department first and foremost, right?
Good to know, they will next time.
Please do, because the city attorney, he's, he's looking at all the legal stuff. We're the ones taking care of all the, the growth and development. We really, you know, between my department and the public works department. Because again, if my city, you know, my subdivision inspectors don't know about this, they can't, they don't know what to go look. So again, just, so maybe it's good education that if you have these things, help us so that we can go out, why stuff is being constructed, okay? That's when I, I need to know about that stuff. But some of this stuff looks like it's been there for quite a while. And again, you have a slope, you've always had a slope. You admit it, we know that. You know, some of this dirt is new. I'll, I'll, I'll agree to that. I can see that it is, but I need to still go out and take a look.
We would invite you to come out and look at it before you make a final decision. And, and particularly in Lynn Beach's unit. That's where, that's where I, I mentioned that you could literally reach out, another four feet, you can touch that dirt that did not exist then.
Yeah, but I-
You can see where the erosion-
But looking back on this because your subdivision 30 years ago, you know, I wish they would have been doing what we do today 30 years ago because your subdivision would have had to address those things. We wouldn't have let you build right up to the slope coming into your, your block wall. That's just not good, good development. I'm, I'm telling you just by 30 years of experience, that's, you don't have a slope from the property next to you running right to the bottom of your wall. Water, who said it, water goes downhill, right? Who was, who's claimed that? Water goes downhill, so.
Well, I was, the dirt piled up higher here in the-
Well, I don't know, but that's things I can look, but again, if I would have heard about this months ago, I could, you know, we probably wouldn't be here tonight having to worry about it. But I, it's just hard on us when we're, we're doing a, a meeting, coming in and we hear about this after a phase one's been in for a while and stuff's been going. So just in the future, if, you know, when that's, please come down and, so we can at least look at something and see what we can do.
It was probably on the stage, you're going to the attorney rather than you, but-
And I'm not blaming him, but yeah, he's looking at legal, we're looking at how things are, are developed and built. That's what our, that's what we do. You know, the planning department and especially the public works, they have a specific division for subdivision, you know, inspection and making sure it's built right and everything.
Had he directed us, we would have had that discussion, but he didn't.
Let's go ahead and do this, let's, um-
So anyway, what, did I kind of help you because I'm not sure what you were asking? I just was curious. So anyway, what, did I kind of help you? Because I'm not sure what you were asking. I just was curious. I've been sitting here the whole time.
I will tell you guys.
This guy's guns blazing right here. He's not going to take no for an answer. Look at him. He's serious. It's a heart attack. Go ahead, sir. Even though the public, let me open the public hearing so I can let you speak. Is that all right with you? Is that okay with you?
I'm, I'm having trouble here.
Okay, let me open the public hearing. Okay. Cause it's been closed. Okay. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing so I can hear your comment and it will be the last comment I will hear this evening. Go ahead.
I appreciate that. You're with public works?
No. Planning department.
We, over the years, the last fifteen years, Washington city has come out and cleaned that wall along this side and also the east side before they put this other development in, they've done it twice. They was able to use a backhoe and a crew to, to clean all the weeds out that, that were a fire hazard. Now that we've got the berm in there and we can't get equip, equipment in there, you couldn't get a backhoe in there to clean that out. And the weeds come down off that hill and the only way you can access that is to walk down that steep hill. You, we don't have the right kind of a picture here. You should have a side view and show how steep that and how close that is to that wall. There isn't that, only about that much room between that berm coming down and the wall. And that water pours right down there underneath that wall that has been eaten up by the alkali. Because Washington city came through there and they put a ditch and they banked it up on the side of our block wall. And they banked it up this way twice. And that dirt against the wall has eaten the, the, the block up and the alkali and eaten holes in that wall. And when that water comes down now, it goes under that, in those holes and onto the patios of these folks.
All right, now I get that. And that, and that's, so go ahead and close it. But where you're saying the flooding is happening is not where all that. So that's why I'm, I'm really confused about.
All the way down along, all the way from the top down. It's going underneath that wall.
I don't think we got your name just for you, the record. So we could put it down. What was your name? Robert Larson? Okay.
Yes.
Right there. I see your comment. Right there, Robert. Thank you.
My points are, are on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm just, I, I have a couple of questions that I want to add to this really quick, but commissioners might also. Land that is north, we'll call it north, it is north actually, of that white line right there. Does the city own that? Does the developer own that? Who owns that land?
This piece right here?
Yeah, where the detention pond and all that is.
That's owned by the developer.
Developer? And does that go all the way down to where the white cuts off?
Zoom out.
Yes, that white line?
They own, developer owns, you do own this, right, James? And you guys own this piece as well, right? This one right here? Oh no, you don't. That might be mine. Well, let's see. I don't know. But I'm talking this rectangle right here?
It is? Okay.
So it's tied to your phase one? These guys? Okay. Okay.
Because we didn't hear it tonight, I want to make sure you hear this comment. So you just have this as well, because it's, it's separate than what we're talking about. And I just wanted to make sure that we're not having a problem with it. In regards to phase two of desert flower proposal, my greatest concern is that a proper drainage and builder follow through. I am currently a homeowner in phase one of desert flower. The builders inadequately planned our street and didn't plan any drains. Anytime it rains, our water is on the roads. It floods our street, especially right in front of our house. And the more that happens, the closer water gets to our house, risking potential water damage. I don't know if I believe that. I just want you to know that's one of the comments, because I can, I can't imagine the city allows you guys to build those roads without proper drainage.
Right, there is, there is two storm drain, uh, at, at the very end of desert cactus drive. However, development will stop that. So on our plan, if you flip back to the, the proposed plan, the drainage arrows going across the top of those homes and then down to the pond, that will stop all the drainage coming off of the hill. So if that's the water they're talking about, because that slope is fairly big. At the time of constructing desert flower phase one, there was a lot of dirt piled right there. So that is, that's a decent slope that.
So that is an issue from that particularly?
Yeah, it, it would be, but this development solves that. We have to have driveways from desert cactus drive up to these homes landscaped with hardscape. Homes will be built behind that. There'll be a drainage that drains all the water into the property. If anything, this will really help that.
Okay, perfect. Drew, with that being said, was it a mistake that the city? I don't know. Should we have anticipated that that was going to be a problem with that home number sixteen it looks like there? Or is that something that, you know, I mean, like, it's, it's interesting to me that we have brand new subdivision. We were trying to mitigate as much as we could. But then a comment comes in like, hey, my house floods and.
Well, well, time might have been the essence on this because phase two over here that we're talking about tonight, we tried to come in earlier and that might have helped this whole situation, but we ran into this power line problem that had to push all the homes back. So there's lots of things that have, you know, held this from going through. So I, I don't know if they, I would say we could have foreseen it. It's just that time hasn't been the, you know, it's been the enemy in this case, I think, just of making the whole thing work.
All right, thanks.
We, we definitely didn't anticipate that slope being there as long as it has.
It looked like it had recently been cleaned up.
We did clean up a bunch of it. We took it down at least to where we kind of blended into the slope. So you didn't have just a big pile there.
Okay. Commissioners, do you guys have any other comments or questions? Then I'll sit back and let you go.
I have a question on the drainage. Drew, can you go back to the aerial real quick? I'm just confused for a second. Can you, can you go to that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about on.
No, no, on the. And show the, the drainage. So that's, that's a pond, correct?
Correct, yes.
The rock lined?
The rock is on the banks of it, correct?
Correct.
How much water is, can actually from there down to that wall in a twenty foot span? That's where, that's where I'm confused because right there where that's been cleaned up, there's a retention basin. So anything coming from the south that's flowing north is going to land in there, correct?
Correct.
So where's the water? Where would the, I don't understand where the water would come from right there. It, it's got to come from that little section right there. Or on top of the road and the road has been there for forever? Am I wrong?
Talking to my point is the road.
That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying though, because it's not creating more water coming off the hill. Because there's a retention pond right there. It's stopping it. Am I right?
Actually collecting.
Or am I, or am I missing something?
In theory, that's exactly. It's got to catch, it's got a, you know, a cup, you know, a bowl, whatever, catching the water.
And, and that's what they're saying. The problem is, I'm, I'm, I, I don't know, but what I'm saying is it doesn't collect in my head because that's taking care of the problem is from what I'm seeing.
You know, it is just the maintenance road of the city is that much higher than the homes and it's always been. And, and what, you know, from a developer point, it, maybe they're saying of, hey, this is an opportunity to bring it to light to see what can be fixed, but there's a sewer line that goes through that. I mean, there's utilities in that road. Um, that road is established. Uh, that's an established grade.
Has this road been upgraded at the detention area?
Yes, along there, we road based it and gravelled it all the way to the end of the.
Did the elevation change or was it?
No.
Okay.
And I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure it doesn't slope. I'm sure the road.
Well, because the design of detention had to take some of that, right? We have to, but yeah, these are the walls of the detention. You can see.
Right. That's what I was, that's what I'm asking. That's, that's it, right? So where's the water coming from? Even though a good rainstorm, I mean.
It's a slope that will drain and it always has.
No, I understand that, but.
Developing.
But what I'm saying though is, in my opinion, that stopped.
Not eighty percent of it?
That's going to help it. When I, when I look at this, I mean, I understand that there's, there probably is some issues with those backyards, but I don't believe that cleaning that up made it worse. It might've taken, might've made the rain runoff a little faster because there's no vegetation now. But that retention pond that I'm assuming you guys put in.
They did.
Stop most of that running onto those homes. I mean, right?
The, this commissioner Anderson, so the, the thing that made it worse is as far as flooding is cleaning up the vegetation because vegetation slowed down the flooding.
Understandable. That's what I'm saying. So, but other than that, it's better because it's not coming all the way off the hill and running down.
So it reduced the amount of, of flow, but it, but it got rid of vegetation. In my, in my opinion, it needs to be rip wrapped on the backside. I mean, that's, that's the only way you're going to keep, you know, mud runoff flowing down to the wall. And I'll go back to what I told the gentleman over here. They don't have the right to, to drain water onto your property, but you also don't have the right to, to let, you know, rainwater and mud and whatever go down onto their property. It goes, that goes both ways as well. And so, I mean, I, ideally, I mean, honestly, they, they need to have their drainage go to their street. And I think this needs, the backside of that wall or slope needs to be rip wrapped. And it probably should have been caught earlier, but it, it didn't. And, and that's what Drew was saying. I mean, if people would, would have talked to planning or public works about it earlier, it probably would have been caught. And it probably would have been part of phase one, say, hey, rip wrap the backside of this. And, and I will say, I mean, in Drew's defense, I've, I've built plenty of houses and I've had, you know, somebody down below called Drew's offices and say, hey, they're not going to drain their, their downspouts on, you know, down the hill onto my property. And he's called and, and, and had a meeting and said, you can't go forward until you put a sump pump in and spit your water back up to the street, even if it's a walkout basement. I mean, he, he's done that to me a couple of times and I said.
That was your houses?
Yeah. So, so it does work when people call and they have a concern. I mean, you know, that, that's just how it is. You can't drain water onto people's property. And likewise, even though you, you sort of inherited the, the, the elevation here. And it kind of sucks because that was, it was there, but it needs, it needs to be rip wrapped on the back. I mean.
And at the time, we, we did clean that whole thing out and there was a lot of dirt from just.
No, I, I, I.
Up against the weed back out.
That's the only way you're going to solve this issue with them is, is to rip wrap the backside of that.
And, and if, if they, you know, that agreement was in place, so they could drain onto my property. And, and we built that to their, uh, you know, we, we met their HOA and he signed off, yes, this looks good and we'll, we'll take it from here. So that was the agreement.
But I think, again, again, the problem is if they drain onto there and, and what little, and what water comes from, from the road down drains, it all amounts to just water at the bottom. It doesn't have anywhere to go. I mean, they shouldn't be draining onto yours. And, and you need to rip wrap that to keep it away from their wall. I mean, both, both things need to happen.
Something that then, if, if that is the hard line that you want to do, then they would need to pull their gutters off and.
I, I agree. They, they, I would say they need to pull their gutters off, but I would also say you need to rip wrap the back of that.
That makes sense.
And then, then you don't have to worry about an agreement because they deal with their water and you deal with your water. Do you see what they have around the pond, the, the, the rock lining? That's called rip wrap. So it's, it's armoring the hillside. It's protecting it from erosion. So the backside needs, when, when he cleaned off the backside of that, that's why you see more erosion now is because it looks cleaner and everything. But water can run down it easier without all the vegetation. So it needs to have rip wrap on the backside to protect it. But likewise, your homes need to stop draining water to the backside as well. It, both things are contributing to the issue. Yes, yes. Yeah. No, I know. I'm just, I'm just saying any water regardless where it's coming from is causing the problem. So you have to reduce the water through, you know, erosion control, which is rip wrap. And you have to reduce the water by getting rid of, needs to swell there. So it has somewhere to go and, and reduce the amount of water that goes. That's the only way to fix it.
You see, you see where we're at with all this. You have any suggestion of what you'd like to see happen?
I think, I think, uh, as to Mr. Anderson, uh, Corey is just, they would take their gutters off and stop draining onto our property. And we would go and build, you know, the V ditch was built. We'd have to recreate that if it has filled in. And then maybe rip wrap, like Corey's saying, uh, that valley going all the way across. And that would take care of that. Maybe a six foot wide swath.
And I'd also say, I mean, you, you'd need to rip wrap the bottom, but you'd need either, either rip wrap the hillside or hydroseed or something just to, to keep the erosion from draining down.
Yeah. I just, I want to make sure that we can do what's in best interest for everybody. I don't expect or I'm not asking, I don't think anybody is asking you to do something that you probably don't need to be doing. So that's why I'm wanting to make sure you have your two cents in there before we ask you to do something. You're like, I don't know, I shouldn't be doing that. I'm still trying to figure out how all that dirt got there to be honest, but I, I don't know.
Well, we had the agreement. I mean, it was addressed at the time desert flower was built. With contracts, with, with the signed agreement with them. If, if they're not okay with it, then I, I, I think we go back to that. Or they need to pull their water. We, uh, eliminate the idea of them draining water behind their wall. Cause we've, we've pulled four feet of dirt off of the back of their wall already. Um, before we, uh, as we're developing desert flower. So if that is the case, then they pull their gutters off, um, that's contributing quite a bit of water to it. But then we go in and make our check dams and.
So do you want that as a condition on approval? Are you okay with that? What, I mean, I don't want to say, look, we're going to table this till you guys figure it out. That's what I really want to do, but I can't make a motion.
I would like to see it go through. So if, if they're willing to pull all their gutters off, then we'll take full maintenance. It, it will be, we'll retract our agreement we already have with the HOA. But that being said, they need to pull all their water off our property and we'll maintain ours.
Because you're the one that gets to decide. You're the developer that's got the, the permit in here. Are you willing to have us proceed with a, a motion one way or the other, suggesting that that happens without talking to them? Meaning, are you, are you willing to just say, yeah, all right, as of tonight, you're going to tell them they've got to stop putting water in there?
Yeah. I mean, if, if that, that is the right way to do it.
If you're going to do any, uh, improvements in that area at all, it's going to require that.
Yeah. If they're going to have me go in and remaintain that, then I will require them to pull all their water off of our property.
All right.
I, I would, I would say that, and for you homeowners, whoever lives there, I mean, whether it's a minor thing or, or, or a larger thing with a sump pump, I mean, that water is going to have to go somewhere else. Because if, if you are dumping water onto his property, you can't ask him to bear all the cost of maintenance and repair too. I mean, it's, it's much easier if you just have a clear cut line and you, you take care of your water, he takes care of his.
It's a little concerning that, let's say we assume that that happens and the HOA says, we're not taking that water off there. We've got twenty homeowners that, right?
Well, it wouldn't be an HOA. They'd be an individual owner. Each individual owner is going to have to do it.
The individual owner, if they didn't do it, then they become, I mean, do we?
So that, that's the tricky thing. How do we enforce that?
All those homeowners here that are going to agree to that or otherwise they'd be liable? It just gets crazy. It gets too crazy. And that's why I was like, I don't know if we're willing to make this tonight, but it has nothing to do with the project. That's what I don't like about it.
Yeah, I really don't want to see this tabled over this issue where we thought we did have it remedied. But really what Corey's saying is, is every homeowner retains their water. Um, unless we have an agreement that I get to dump my water on your property.
Right. That, that's city law. You can't dump onto someone else's property, period.
So if, if we want to make that condition that if they'll pull all their water off, I am happy to take back over the maintenance of that. Um, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And, and instead of us trying to put this in something like in one of our conditions, why don't we try and be like, why don't we just say approval pertaining until this has been worked out? I mean, you could, we're approving it, but this has to be worked out beforehand. I mean, if Drew, like Drew says, he didn't even know about it. So let's, let's let the city look into it and then give them the option to stop this, you know, as a condition if the city can't get it figured out. The drainage and the water issues, or is that?
No, it's, and I was just thinking about this through preliminary plat. They have to still go through final plat. You can make a condition. Final plat will not be, be accepted to be applied for until, you know, the city's comfortable with what's been worked out or something on that. I, you know, and when, because we may not be able to do anything. And if that's the case, then it shouldn't hold this plat up anyway, or the other way around, or else we get something dressed up on this and then gives them time to do everything.
Like we're getting hit with it tonight. Like Drew didn't even know about any of this. So I think that it's not, neither did Mr. Jessup. Because I think what we need to do is approve it, in my opinion, and then, but have a condition that this needs to be looked at. Someone needs to go out there and look at this. Cause I mean.
The problem we have is we're putting a burden on, on the homeowners, big burden.
We're, 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 we're not putting, I mean.
Well, they have to contain their water, which they've never had to do. I guess. I know it's state law. Is there a prescriptive easement there?
I think you can, especially because I know my code says you can't have, you can't put your roof over. It's been that way for a long time.
I know.
Can't put an eve over some, a property line.
Right. I understand. But my gosh, they've done it for years and, and now shit hits the fan. Use my French.
Did you swear again? I missed it. Did you do it again?
But, but commissioner, but we're talking about water and if that's adding to it, it doesn't help the.
I agree.
That's all I just go back to is that we got to look at, any, any water that's going there needs to be addressed.
I'm appreciative of what you're willing to do. I, again, it's frustrating to me because it has nothing to do with, I think, what we initially started talking about. I still can't figure out if you actually bear responsibility. I'm going to rely on the expert here that knows more about it than I do and the expert there that knows about it more than I do. I'm willing to, I, I, I can't make a motion. I'm more than happy to entertain a motion that we submit this through for approval to the city council, knowing that it can be stopped if this doesn't get rectified, whether it's through the city or if something comes up on your end.
As there's a condition that I can, because they have to meet all the conditions.
Okay. Well, then we just need to figure out what that commission, how it's worded and, and be done with it because we have somebody who's willing to, to fix it. Let's move on. I don't know. Yeah.
I'll make a motion, but. Which number over here?
For it. Five A, five A.
Number, doesn't have the number on here. I know it doesn't have the number on here. Not on the paper. What's the number?
Not on the paper. What's the number? This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Desert Flower Phase Two. With the, the findings and conditions of staff and add a, an extra condition that the, the, the berm on the, on the, how do I say this? The berm from the road down to Horizons West wall is, has erosion control with, with rip wrap. And you know, check berms, et cetera. Yeah. It, it needs to be erosion controlled. The backside of that berm needs to have erosion control. And that's something that Public Works and Planning, you guys can decide what's appropriate erosion control. And send it to city council for consideration.
The water drainage.
Yeah. Also the further. Just, okay, just, the applicant needs to, needs to provide erosion control on the, the, the berm side of that. Detention basin where it, where it goes down to Horizons West. Send it to city council for consideration before final plat approval. And I'll also say for the record, for the applicant's benefit, that the homeowners need to stop draining their water onto his property in order to help mitigate the erosion. This is Commissioner Bullock. I'll second.
Melody, were you able to make sense of that motion? Sure it's fine. I just want to make sure you're still awake. I've got a motion on, by Commissioner Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Bullock, individual voting. Commissioner Tuppo, Commissioner Bullock, Commissioner Sheal.
I'm questionable. So I'm going to say nay.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen, I'm an aye as well. This motion passes and we'll send it to city council with our recommendation for approval based on the findings and conditions that we outlined in the motion. Thank you all for joining and coming this evening. I'll take a minute or two. If you wanted to go ahead and exit, you can at this time. It's, that's a weird. Okay. We're going to go ahead and get started in about 30 seconds. We're going to hear item number six A, which is the last item on our agenda this evening.
Jason.
Two, two seconds?
I know. I do that all the time.
Thank you. Yes. Cause it's R three. You guys just haven't done it for, because back then maybe your first R three ones you've ever done. But R three requires anything over five units is a C. That's just how it's built in our system. So we can look at, make sure that. Amenities and all that stuff that we require on there.
All right. Melody, you're there? Melody, you can hear me okay?
Jason, I'm back.
All right. We're going to go ahead and hear item number six A. This is a public hearing for consideration for approval for a townhome project. C dash 23 dash 05 located approximately 1190 East Bullock Street. The applicant is Boyd Bradshaw and DS Investments, and I will turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, commissioners. Seems like every planning commission, we have a theme and tonight was definitely drainage. I am not aware of drainage being an issue on this property. This, yeah, yes. This site is proposing 17 units in the form of eight three bedroom units and nine two bedroom units. The townhomes consist of three floors and a basement. The townhomes will be approximately 32 feet tall to the top of the parapet, which is under the 42 foot height requirement. Each unit will have a two car garage providing 34 parking stalls. And there are 11 designated visitor parking stalls for a total of 45 parking stalls. The required parking for this project is 41. So they're actually overparked a few stalls. This area is designated as high density, which allows for 13 to 16 units per acre. And the proposed project covers 1.77, 1.77 acres, which comes in at 9.6 units per acre. The zoning of the proposed site is R three, which is multiple family residential. The zoning to the north and west is also R three with Sienna Hills Plan Community Development to the east and Plan Unit Development to the south. The amenities for the site include a pool, cabana area, open grass area for playing and a pickleball court. The exterior elevations consist of lighter colored stone and stucco, brown plank siding and a dark colored fascia. Staff has reviewed the proposal and finds that it meets the standards as outlined in the general plan and zoning ordinances. Staff is supportive of this project at this location with the building layout and exterior finishes being aesthetically attractive. The amenities and open landscape areas are sufficient and will be of value to the project. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve C dash 23 dash 05, allowing for a townhome development to be built at 1190 East Bullock Street. And that's based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right, commissioners will open the floor for any initial questions that you might have. Eldon, are these technically going to be four stories then? The three above ground and one under?
Correct. Yeah.
And I was out today looking at the, the project site. I had a little bit of a difficulty. Maybe if you could help me, Drew, on some kind of an overhead on Bullock Street where it ends, where is this in relation to that? Does this encroach onto the sod farm? I don't want to see that picture ever again.
All right. I should have told you to look away.
My leg just gave me like a shot of electricity.
Look away. It's right here. So here's the parkway over here, Sienna Hills, that church that's on the parkway.
Is it the wrong side?
It's right here. And then the RV park, you know, that just got opened up is due north of it, right up here.
We have anything that's four story like this anywhere?
Well, I, I, I wouldn't really call this, it's not a four story. It's a three story with a basement.
What's the basement for?
The basement's underground. Anything you count down is really not, you don't call it a story. You just say it's a basement, you know, it's a, that's just terminology. So it's three stories.
To be a living quarter down there? Is that?
Um, let me go in and I'll show you what they're, they're showing right now. They're going to be unfinished basements.
I saw that. Well.
I would, you know, so that's why I appreciate, because now we don't need storage units because they can put it down here.
Okay. I think it's a good idea. I'm just like, okay.
And it's just this area right here. It's not because the garage, you could do a floor there, but I recommend to people do not put rooms underneath garage floors. They tend to have cracks, et cetera. So this, so this is why it's not a really a true four story, just because I've got this rec room, basement, storage, mechanical room down here.
Drew, I have a question on the, on the parking. Do you still have, because I didn't see the driveway depths on these.
Oh, there, there is no driveways. You just drive right in off of the, let me get to it. You just come off of the, the private roadway and pull right into your garage. It's like it would be an alley loaded system, you know, and then you drive directly into the unit. And then there's extra parking around the perimeter here. So yeah, there is no particular quote unquote driveway.
That, that's the only thing that worries me. I know they have a basement with nothing in it, but people don't like to pack all their stuff down to the basement. That's, that's my concern is there's no, I mean, there's garage, but it's, it's, I feel like it's not going to have parked cars in it.
Well, that's why they've got the basement is ideally so you park your cars in the garage.
I have a basement too, and I hate packing stuff down there.
So I lived in very first townhome I ever bought 30 years ago, was almost this exact same type of layout. And it worked really well. It just, the streets are, it's just a road to get into your driveway. And it makes for a really cool common area out front because then everyone's front yard is the pool and everything else.
It's good perspective. This is right due west of it, connects right to it. This project's been there for a while. I've, I've been driven through it a few times because I had problems with people. Well, there they are. There's my evidence. Cars parking in, this is the, this is the turnoff for the fire truck in case it goes in there. And I told them, they've been good about it lately, but um, yeah, they were parking here, but not per se in this area. Now, if you want, I don't know if there's a condition on there. I didn't take a peek at it, but feel free. They just put no parking signs on all the, all the buildings, you know. The condition, but.
With the assumption that the developers here, I might have this question for them in a second. There was a subdivision or wasn't it actually next to the one we just heard where they were not allowed to put storage in their garage? Where I guess was actually.
When the CCNRs, I said they were going to do that.
Yeah. There was one that they couldn't use it for storage for two cars. They had to at least park one car or something like that. Do you remember that? They had, they had units. Yeah. So maybe my question is for the developer. Is there anything, is there, are they here? Yeah. You can just nod. If you want to come up, actually come on up, if you don't mind, please. I'm just curious if you, if you're planning on selling this or if you're keeping this, or if there's going to be an HOA where there's going to be a stipulation that you can't use your garage for full storage and then have to fire.
Um, we, my name is Boyd Bradshaw. I'm the developer of the property and we have considered that. There's been some conversation about that. We know that's an issue in projects like this, but obviously we've met the city requirement for the amount of parking we need for the project. We don't want to see it. There's, there's a potential that we're going to retain ownership in some and going to sell some of the rest. So it's a project we have a personal interest in and we want to see it. People keep their, their crap out of the garage. The reason why we're considered the basement is for that reason. You know, you mentioned that Corey, that a lot of these projects don't have enough storage in them. And that's the main reason why we have considered the basement is because there's just not enough places for people to put their stuff. So that's what we're intending.
So what would happen Drew, or maybe anyone can answer this. If hypothetically speaking, worst case scenario, everybody just used their garage for storage. So you've got whatever number of cars, it's going to fill up every space they have. Where are people going to start parking? They're going to go into these other neighborhoods probably and start parking?
They'll park right on Bullock Street.
First, they would first go park on Bullock if.
We okay with that as a city? Is that, again, worst case scenario?
Well, we're not okay with it, but it's a public street and I can't stop people unless it's posted or painted. No parking. I mean, that's the short answer to that, right? They, they can't use the street to meet their parking. But I can't stop people from, unless I put no parking signs on them.
This is Commissioner Anderson. My, my question would be, what do you do when, when people have visitors coming? Where are the visitors going to park?
Well, and that's the idea for the other parking stalls that are there. That's what they're for.
If you can keep people out of them, right?
But it's two car garage and it's an ample two car garage. So it's 22 feet deep and 20 feet wide. So.
Yeah. I think it's cool, Boyd. When I look at the pictures, I'm, I actually am excited about it. At first my question was like, holy cow, three, three stories. But then I realized I was on the wrong side of the sod farm. So yeah, actually it's fine right there. No, I don't have any problem with it, commissioners. Anything else that you might have? Go ahead. As long as your basement doesn't flood, then we'll be okay.
Yeah. All our water is flowing away from everybody else.
There you go. Oh, is this a public hearing? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the public hearing portion of the meeting. If there's anybody who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Nobody jumped up fast enough. I don't think anybody wanted to speak to it. Yeah. City council. And I'll go ahead and turn the time back over to commissioners for a motion or any comment or question.
I, I like the project. I don't like the parking situation. Just, that's my, that's my biggest concern with it is there is no parking. Your visitors aren't going to pull in your garage. And there's only 11 extra spaces. So I, I don't think that's enough for the development in my eyes. I mean, if they were, where you could stack them on the driveway, it'd be a different story, but I, I don't, I don't think there's enough parking myself.
This is Commissioner Tuppo. I do like the project. It looks very attractive. If I was a visitor, I'd probably just park right in front of their garage.
Is there enough, Commissioner Anderson, is there enough room people park in front of the garage that you can still drive behind it and get to the next unit? That's the problem. Cause if there's not, then you cause a huge roadblock. Do we know what the distance is?
I don't know if we do know what the distance is. I don't know if there's any. Well, this is 10 feet. Like it's, it's probably 27 to 30 feet.
There's a different sheet that says.
Oh, is there another one?
33 feet there.
Is it on this guy? There you go.
Yeah, there, yep.
It's including the parking stall though, so. Yeah, but that's out to this one line that's, you know, still, I still have room to the building.
Oh, somebody parks behind the driveway, you're going to block the road. So then they can't park behind the garage. Or you completely block the road.
They'll drive by it. If they, if they go parallel with the garage, if they, if they go in this way, nobody, hopefully nobody.
Sorry, nobody should be parking long way. If they go this way, at least short time. That's why I kind of recommended maybe a no parking sign.
For 10 minutes, you'll get out before you get towed.
I will point out, we did, we went back a little while ago, commission's aware of it and upgraded our parking minimums. You know, so there, which probably would have put four or five extra on this project, at least three, I would think. Because you know, when you have a three bedroom, you got to be 2.25, not just 2.0 like we used to. So with the number of three bedrooms that, that added, and so they're, they're right there with that. So.
I have a question for the developer. Is there anywhere on here, I know it's a tight piece. Is there anywhere on here where you could squeeze any other additional visitor parking?
There just isn't. We actually, we've toyed with this plat for, it's been five, six months now. And we've gone around a number of iterations of it and moving buildings in different locations. And as you've already identified, it's a difficult piece to try to develop because of the angle of Bullock Street and the way it sweeps along the outside there really limits what you can do with the property. And so we've really tried to make a nice project out of it while addressing all the city's concerns and needs and the requirements that we've accomplished. So I, we've done as best we think we can do.
I will, I will tell you, if push come to shove, and I was visiting there. There's enough room in this, this knuckle. there's enough room in this, this knuckle? To be honest with, I don't want to make it that way, but I'm just telling you that if I live there or told someone, I'd just say, hey, go park by the, because this will get picked up only once a week, right? And if it's just visiting there, I think you've got possibly, if I'm just going off of these standards here, you're like.
Well, I'll, I'll offer this. When we went and got our will-serv letter from Waste Management, they said technically this project only needs one dumpster. We drew two, so we could pull out one of the dumpsters and, and add another spot here or there. Probably there where you're mentioning, Drew.
Yeah, if it's me, I would, this isn't a great spot. You know, if you tilted this one a little more and just went one, maybe, you know, sloped it back this way, it'd be easier, but I, I'm just saying you could do some overflow. I'm just saying they're looking for places that people might.
Yeah.
And you could probably put a sign there, overflow parking. I, I mean, it's not gonna hurt.
Could put three spots there.
I mean, again, we already got more than what we're required to by your code, but that is an option because the, I forget who it is I talked to at Waste Management, but they said we didn't need to have two dumpsters.
And if push came to shove, you could.
I think it's smart to have two dumpsters so your. Yeah, that's, that's why we put two in there.
I, I wouldn't take a dumpster away. I just, like I said, I like the project. I think it's really good. I just, I, I just don't see people parking in your garages. I hope I'm wrong. You know, I really do. I hope, I hope it works out just fine. I just think I would get rid of that tree right there, because that's gonna take up a parking spot.
I think I'd get rid of those two trees down on the bottom road there.
Or slide the one.
You could get a couple more.
Then you'll get some more spots. On the left-hand side.
Yeah, and sometimes you try to soften the project, though, so you don't just have such hard edges all over. Sweep things a little bit, add a little bit of planter, you know, a lot of it's gonna be rock and xeriscate stuff, but still just adding a tree or something here and there still helps the project.
Yeah, this kind of shows you the underneath of what the, the curbing will be, right?
Yeah.
So.
So this is Commissioner, I, I really, Commissioner Anderson, I really like the project. I think it looks great. It's good use of space, good architecture. I've built lots of projects like this and they work well. My, my biggest, and you meet the, you meet the code, my biggest concern really is more for the people living there, and then if you own it, you know, you guys just trying to make it work, because I've also done lots of these, and it's, you, well, you know, parking is the biggest nightmare to try and figure out how to make it work.
Always is.
Everybody figures a way to park on your landscaping. The reason why we're doing basements in Southern Utah where you don't have to do basements, so.
This is Commissioner Tuppo. I, I do like the project. I don't have a problem with the parking. I was just saying that I would park in front of, in front of, or I would park on Bullock Street.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, Boyd.
Okay.
Commissioners, I'll look for a motion unless there's additional comments or questions.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve C dash twenty-three dash zero five located at approximately eleven ninety East Bullock Street with the findings and, and conditions by staff and send it to City Council for consideration.
This is Commissioner Tuppo. I second that.
Wait, Drew, this, well, this is a conditional use. Is this one us or is this one sent it to City Council? Is this, okay, then I, let me amend that, Melody. Make a motion to approve C dash twenty-three dash oh five with the findings and conditions outlined by staff.
Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
Okay, but first by Commissioner Anderson, I have a second by Tuppo. Individual voting, Tuppo.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Sheal.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. Motion passes. Boyd, good luck with the project. Looks good. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any other comments, questions, or concerns to be brought before this body tonight, before we adjourn? I'll look for a motion to close if there is not.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Got a first and a second all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.